Welcome to our legislative meeting of the Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners. Welcome, everyone. We're going to introduce ourselves.
Leslie Herbie, clerk to the courts.
Alicia Reese, county commissioner, vice president of.
Good afternoon. I'm county commissioner Denise Dreehouse.
Jeff Alito, county administrator.
Thank you all so much. I am Stephanie Summeradumas, president of the Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners. We will get started and our first agenda item is a silent prayer, after which if you could please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I'd like to make a motion to approve of the minutes of the previous session.
Second.
Commissioner Summeradumas?
Yes.
Commissioner?
Yes.
Commissioner Dree?
Yes.
Thank you so much. We have public comments, next order of business. And Demity Drey.
Hello, I'm Demity Orle. I am here to, it's okay, it's a different name and a hard name to read. I'm here to offer support for the senior services levy. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of that and the vital role that the council on aging and the elderly service program plays in the lives of older adults and often very vulnerable members of our community. I am the executive director of ProSeniors. We're a nonprofit organization that provides no cost legal and long-term care assistance to seniors to help them resolve legal and long-term care issues. We help seniors with civil legal issues like matters related to Medicare, Medicaid, social security, public benefits, financial exploitation and housing and more. And last year, we helped more than 6,000 seniors resolve legal and long-term care problems. We're just one of many community-based organizations that partner with or receive funding from the council on aging to help connect seniors with the benefits and resources they need to stay independent in the community. And although we don't receive direct funding as an organization from the senior services levy, we know these services are so critical to the seniors that we do see and help. And for that reason, I'm here to speak in support of the levy and encourage you to support it as well. I also want to mention that I'm a board member of the Human Services Chamber of Hamilton County. Later, our executive director will speak, and I don't want to steal his thunder, but I want to personally and as a board member, speak in support of all the levies for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you so much. If we can try whoever's staff here, if you can try to maybe keep those doors open back there, that would be great. Terry Grau, health and hospital levy. Welcome. And there's a two-minute limit for those that are coming up to speak.
So President Summeradumas, Vice President Reese and Commissioner Dreehouse, thank you for the opportunity to speak to the critical importance of the indigent care levy, a safety net for our counties under and uninsured critically ill residents. My name's Terry Grau, Vice President and Chief Nursing Officer at the University of Cincinnati Medical Center. UCMC is the region's only adult academic medical center and largest medical center in Hamilton County with 724 registered inpatient beds. We operate the region's only Level One Trauma Center, Adult Burn Center, Emergency Psychiatric Services and Dental Care. We have more than 12,000 team members at UC Health, serve more than 371,000 patients from all 50 states and had 2 million visits and admissions in 2020. We've been committed to our tripartite mission of education, research and clinical excellence since UCMC was founded 200 years ago. We provide these complex innovative services and training while operating on margins about a third that of other hospitals. Because of this, UCMC is the top 100 of academic health centers in the United States that serve a disproportionate share of the state's uncompensated care and a larger proportion of uninsured and underinsured patients covered by Medicare and Medicaid. Our commitment to advancing medicine and improving the health of all people regardless of their ability to pay remains steadfast. Annually, we provide approximately $100 million in total charitable patient care, nearly 40,000 Hamilton County residents in 2021. These Hamilton County patients are assessing a range of healthcare services are direct beneficiaries of our charity care policy. From fiscal year 18 through 21, 77% of these patients are uninsured and 23% are underinsured. And they're assessing healthcare services across 11 different service lines. Highest utilization is trauma and the other ones are mental health, cardiovascular surgical and women's health services. Since the creation of indigent care levy in 1966, the health needs of our community continue to be profound and exasperated by the economic and public policy landscape of the time. While UCMC will always remain committed to being the region's only super safety net hospital and we will always navigate the economic and policy pressures while continuing to live within our tripartite mission, the indigent care levy continues to guarantee that the safety net we've always provided to our residents will remain stable. We appreciate your ongoing support.
Thank you so much for your comments. Since as I look through these cards for public comments, the majority of them are related to the levy. So with the board's permission, I'd like to make a motion to open up our public hearing on the senior services levy, mental health levy and indigent care levy.
Second.
Commissioner Summeradumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Thank you so much. And the first two comments will be included as part of the public hearing. Joe Luria. And please keep your comments. It is two minutes. I know sometimes you have to go over just a little, but try to stay within the two minutes. Thank you.
I'll do my best.
Okay.
Good afternoon. My name is Dr. Joseph Luriet. I'm the Vice President for Mental Health Operations at Cincinnati Children's and I'm here to speak on behalf of the Health and Hospital Indigent Care Levy. Suicide is now the second leading cause of death in children 10 to 14 years of age. This is really largely due to inadequate access to care. The demand for mental health care has never been greater and when children don't receive care, they experience mental health crises and poor outcomes. Patients and families are waiting weeks or even months to access therapy or medication management services. Our psychiatry outpatient system has over 130 providers, but accessing them is difficult given the current demand. Therefore, we're recruiting an additional 30 providers across our system, but because of workforce shortages, this has been very difficult for us. When children can't access outpatient care, they frequently seek care in our emergency departments. Over the past year, we've observed a 15% increase in the number of children who have accessed our emergency department for mental health care. Over the past year, we've had 2,306 patients held in one of our emergency departments or on a medical bed overnight waiting for a bed at our College Hill campus. When this happens, care is delayed until they actually reach our inpatient unit. The amount of holding and boarding has steadily increased. I quoted a number of 2,306 stays. The year before that, it was 1,764. We're fortunate though in Cincinnati because we do have a very large system. In others in the country, kids are waiting weeks to months to access the same amount of care that kids here are waiting days. The reason patients are able to unaccess care is not only due to high demand, but also relatively large number of children, mostly in county or state custody, who are waiting placement for a residential facility or group home. Many of these children have intellectual delays or display high levels aggression. With workforce shortages, we see many of these facilities closing down or reducing the number of children as they will accept. In the last year, Cincinnati children devoted over 3,900 inpatient bed days to housing children whose inpatient care was finished, but they're simply just waiting for placement in a residential or group home. I'd just like to basically thank you for your hospital levy support. It's extremely important in providing continued care for mental health services, especially when other forms of payment are discontinued. We find these denials to be more prevalent in our residential unit where private insurance coverage doesn't always cover room and board. This helps cover the costs so that patients can access the care that they need. We appreciate it and willing to partner with you in the future.
Thank you so much for your comments. And I'm sitting here in a dilemma because we're saying two minutes, you're going fast. I want the audience that's listening to hear you and we need to stay within the two minutes with those. Comments are so important. So you understand.
I do understand.
The limitations we have, but I just don't want people running through, but I want you to get what you have to say. So thank you so much for your comments.
Thank you very much for listening.
Taking up time by saying all of that. So, okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Dr. Odell Owens.
Good afternoon, commissioners. And again, thank you for allowing me to speak on behalf of a mental health levy. I think there's no contemporary topic today than mental health. You read it in every magazine, every journal, and every time there's a mass shooting, mental health comes up. And all the jobs, I know I couldn't keep a job for a long time, but all the jobs that I've had, mental health has been an issue. When I had served the county as your coroner, I tried to ring the alarm that every three days we averaged one suicide. One every three days, along with the homicides that we were dealing with. At Cincinnati State, the average age of a student was 27. Many of those individuals had to get themselves together for mental health issues and they were ready to come back to school to become productive citizens. As the intercommissioner for the City of Cincinnati Board of Health, it was the opioid. And my last job at Interact for Health, as we dealt with smoking, 40% of people with inner, 40% of people with mental issues are smokers and smoking is the number one cause of death. I know that I'm preaching to the crowd, but I wanted you to know that you have support to not only renew the levy but increase the levy. We need the help. This is the time. And I just want to be here to support you in that decision to put on levy and let the people decide. I came here today, I think it was time for people to stand up, speak up and vote up.
So much. Judge Jody Lubers. Okay. Gloria Walker.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
And thank you for having us. My name is Gloria Walker. I am with NAMI, the National Alliance on Mental Illness, Urban Greater Cincinnati Network on Mental Illness affiliate. I know that's a long name, but it came about because, may I take this off? It's taking my breath away. Okay, it came about because there was no outreach into our brown and black community and a lot of the wonderful things that NAMI does at the national level was not getting to the community in which I live. I am here actually to follow up on what Dr. Owens was saying. We need to have this levy and the increase in this levy. As I look at the statistics, it seems to me, from what I've read, and I'm going to make it short, that our African-American community lacks the kind of recovery, the positive recovery that is experienced in not only mental illness, but also in heart disease and also in pregnancy and childbirth. It goes throughout the medical community. I would like to see mental illness and substance abuse disorder to be the forefront in making that change. I know that if this levy does not go on there, that it is my people in my community will be hurt worse. And I want them to be well taken care of, to receive the treatment, the services and everything that can happen to them. By the way, our NAMI focuses on families. It focuses on those that have a mental illness. So we reach out to help everyone that, got it. We, okay. Okay, we reach out to help everyone in the family, in the community that's impacted by these illnesses. So that's it. So thank you so much for having this and for listening to me.
Thank you for coming. Bill Brown. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon and thank you very much for the opportunity. And Gloria, thank you very much for what you said. Gloria does amazing work. I'm with the Recovery Center of Hamilton County. I'm the program manager. And I want to tell you very quickly how I got there. I am here because of the mental health levy, quite literally. In 2007, I was with Fidelity Investments, making a great deal of money. I had the third largest book of business in the country based out of Covington. I was traveling to the Northeast every week. It was my territory. And on February 27, 2007, I checked into the Marriott downtown Philadelphia where I had a psychotic episode. Came home and my life changed forever and for the better in a lot of ways. We talk about safety nets and I think that we have a vision, at least I did in my head, of the type of people who need safety nets. I'm here to tell you that the safety net saved my life. I was able to get services from Better Cincinnati Behavioral. I got a case manager who is the reason I'm here. And today I'm able to work with people in recovery from illness with the Recovery Center. And one of the things that we did during the pandemic was start online classes and groups so that anyone, quite literally anywhere in the world, could get support. One of the most amazing things that happened over that time was I got a call from a group, an oncology nurses group who was going through the pandemic and they needed support. Those are not the type of people that we normally think of when we think of needing mental health support, but I'm telling you that it's coming. The backlash and the wave from what we've been through the past two years is going to come and we need to be ready for it. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Santoshi Mahendra.
Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to address you on an issue that is so important to our community. My name is Santoshi Mahendra. I'm here to speak in support of the recommended increase to the Hamilton County Mental Health Levy on the November ballot. So I'm here for a couple of different reasons. One, as a member of the Board of Trustees of Lighthouse Youth and Family Services, an important organization that provides critical services to children and families in our community. These services include foster care, mental health and more. I'm also here as someone who received those same services from Lighthouse as a youth in the city of Cincinnati and local areas. I received foster care services and mental health services. So I am literally someone who benefited from a mental health levy such as this. I'm also someone that can speak about the importance of immediate intervention and ongoing support. Because when you experience trauma, it doesn't end after the first couple of months. The ongoing impacts continue and can be shown in even physical health issues. I'm grateful to have received the services as a youth. I'm grateful to have access to mental health services now through my private insurance of my employer. But I'm grateful that there is a safety net in our community if I were to need it. Those mental health services have enabled me to continue on to get bachelor's, master's degrees, work at a Fortune 500, be on a board of trustees and give back to our community. This is how mental health services can continue to lift our populations and help the overall greater good. As a resident taxpayer in Hamilton County, we should invest in the services and levy funds because it would help coordinate the critical services that our constituents need. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Patty Collins. Patty Collins. I didn't hear you. Patty Collins? Oh, okay. Okay. It may take two minutes to get in. No, there she is. Okay, that's okay. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, commissioners, for being here and taking the time for this. Mental health matters. This is personal for me. I have a niece who struggles with mental illness due to the fact that she lost her brother. Tooth infection, he died. She was with him. I have a friend that my husband and I have taken in to live in our second home. He managed a lot of employees, including me, some years ago. His mental illness caused him to lose everything. So being on the board of Maddie's House, which deals with mental illness, it is so critical that we have funding for those who struggle with this and it's so important that a levy that's being brought up today is successfully put on the ballot. We have to help one another. Bootsy and myself, we have a slogan. It's called Together We Can. And we believe together we can make a difference. So thank you for your time. Fingers crossed, prayers going up. Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming. Julie Rowley.
Well, thank you. I'm very, very honored to be here today. Again, my name is Julie Lees Rowley. I'm Maddie's mom. I lost my daughter three short years ago at the young age of 24. Maddie was a daughter. She was a granddaughter to our Hamilton County Sheriff, Simon Lees. She was a sister to, two brothers and a sister. She was a friend to very many and she was a girlfriend to her dear boyfriend, John. And again, she took her own life at the young age of 24. She suffered with mental illness for over 10 years. Started when she was 14. She suffered PTSD, bipolar, anxiety and depression. Went through many different treatment centers, but needed more. There is not enough out there. I think especially we know what has gone on with the pandemic and the crisis that we're all in and the suicide rate continues, continues to go up. We started Maddie's House to make a difference. I'm in total support of the mental health levy to increase, to get more funding to help these young adults. A mom should not bury her daughter. She should have buried me. It was a sad day than when I lost her on January 17th of 2019, but I know the day is coming and with your help and more money out there, we can help others and other families not have the hole in their heart that my family does and so many other families in Hamilton County that do. So thank you for the opportunity to speak today. Thank you for what you do for mental health. And again, I'm going to reside with Patty. Together we can make a difference.
Thank you so much for your comments. And I'm sorry for your loss also. Donald Jones, Senior.
To the commissioners, the all present, I can really just say amen to what Dr. Owens has said and all of these others dealing with mental health. I've been in ministry for over 40 years and I've been pastor of the Greater New Hope Missionary Baptist Church for 28 years. I can't think of any other thing as important as mental health because it affects everybody. Doesn't matter what color you are, doesn't matter where you live. Mental health has affected each of our families directly or indirectly. And with the climate and environment of times in which we live is going to continue, those services are going to continue to be needed for people. I'm in the people business and what you realize that and I with all the other stuff with levies paid for and whatnot, this is a vibrant city. We want all the great, but if people are not vibrant, all the things don't mean anything else. I'm a preacher of hope. I'm a preacher who wants to help and I give you my word. I'll be supporting and talking about this levy everywhere I go. Mental health is important and whatever I can do to support you guys in your decision, then just give me a call. Incidentally, on Saturday, we have a fellowship fair at the Greater New Hope Missionary.
Thank you so much. Jim Jill Miller. Did Judge Lubers come back in? Let me know when she does. Okay. Jill Miller.
Commissioners, thank you so much to have the opportunity to address you on an important issue such as mental health. It's very personal for me as both myself and my daughter have suffered from depression and anxiety. My name is Jill Miller and I am president and CEO of Bethesda, Inc., which is both the co-sponsor of TriHealth and a grant maker in health via BI3. As a philanthropic leader and resident and taxpayer of Hamilton County, I am here to speak in support of the recommendation to increase the Hamilton County Mental Health Levy on the ballot in November. Behavioral health is the pandemic on the heels of COVID-19. The American Academy of Pediatrics has declared a national state of emergency in child mental health. I can speak to the fact that there are children who wait six months to a year to get the services that they need. Pediatricians at TriHealth receive calls from parents every day in tears who cannot find behavioral health services for their children. For far too long, we've separated the body and the mind. And as a grant maker, BI3 has invested and partnered with TriHealth and mental health agencies throughout the community, Lighthouse, Toward House, Beach Acres, Best Point and many others to expand access to both behavioral health, mental and physical health, all in one location. But mental health is bigger than philanthropy. It's going to take all of us working together, breaking down silos, bringing together multi sectors, building trust, increasing our behavioral health workforce and aligning and growing our resources as if lives depend on it because they do. So thank you again. We look forward to working with you to not only renew this levy, but the additional increase as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Pastor Nick Burnett. Pastor Nick Burnett. Can you guys maybe do like three claps instead of five? We can get them in quick.
Commissioners, amen. I'm Pastor Nick Burnett, the proud pastor of House Hope Fellowship Church. My task today is to talk about mental health, really after gun violence. I have the strong task to preach for the past probably 10 years between 20 to 30 violent frontals a year. In the strain that we see by people, by our community dealing with already mental health, the strain of losing a child, it get worse. Nowadays it get worse for the mom, but it get worse for the kids that's at home that's already struggling mentally. Now we have kids that don't even want to come outside because of what their brother or what their sister have experienced by being murdered. And some of the cases have not even been solved. And me, just well as everyone is in here, we just want to let you know that we support mental health. We support the people who's struggling because the struggle is real, not the people that we see that's struggling, but it's multitudes of people that's struggling secretly that don't nobody else know about and they need our help. And so today I just want to help the people who really need our help, our community and our city, and we thank God for you. God bless you.
Thank you. God bless you. Michael Deleon. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm a little overwhelmed with all these people here today. I am speaking on behalf of ICRON. I'm a 55-year-old male. My name is Michael Deleon. I suffer from bipolar one, depression, anxiety, personality disorder. I was sitting at City Gospel Mission Homeless Shelter when Hannah and Eric from ICRON gave a class for us to stay in the shelter. We had to take classes. They explained what services that ICRON offered, and I was praying for a sign. That was the sign. I quickly made a phone call, got into the intake program, and I qualified for their day program. When they take us into the day program, they ask us what our goals are. Mine was to educate on my mental health issues, coping skills, to be self-sufficient, to have a car, an apartment and a job. In October of 2020, I graduated, excuse me, from the program. ICRON literally saved my life, and mental health is a serious issue that needs to be addressed. Today, we we see stories about gun violence and and mass shootings. And what people don't understand is the underlying problem is mental health, and there's not enough help. And being personally suffering from mental illness, we realize, we think we're alone, and we're not alone. And that's why there needs to be an increase in this levy. That's why there needs to be more services for 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 people out there like me to 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 help save and to be another success story. So thank you for letting me speak in front of you, and I urge the support of the of this mental health. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Derek Thomas. Derek Thomas.
Hello, this is Thomas. I want to thank the commissioners for giving me the time to force my support for the levy. Yeah, support increase in the levy. As a recipient of Paul Howard ends with disability, who was nice enough, it kind of to help me get referred into ACOM. And thanks to my walk you at ACOM, ACOM helped me secure appointment for time because I struggle due to my social anxiety. Yeah, I also struggle with my physical species assignment that was born with. We come to get you a job for Mickey Wills, but thanks to my job coach who's in the back, Joey Oakwood. I was able to find we get full-time appointment at Fifth Dollar Bank after working as a contractor. I can vouch. I know how hard it is during the pandemic with scum the mailhouse because I see was my, I lost a job. What with the pandemic happen, I thought I was over because it does house sassed out at the best I was, but it was fast to talk you with Joey to do a math weekly sasses over the phone. It also with him's chat to out my opponent talking to me about not to worry. That was able to rebuild my confidence. Is this a cell? So I support this levy because I believe it's just a small way of giving back for all the help that the community gave me with giving me mailhouse services. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your testimony. Sounds like ICRON is doing some great things. So Janice Currie. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Janice Curry, and I am a native Cincinnati, and I welcome the opportunity to speak on behalf of the Mental Health Levy as a senior of as a citizen of Cincinnati. I was born here a majority of my life. I have lived in Walnut Hills, 55 years. I've lived in Walnut Hills, 42 years in the same residence. And what I have always affectionately said is that I live on Peel Hill. As a nurse, I've been a nurse for 48 years. On Peel Hill, I've just have felt excited because I can get five, 10, 15 minutes every place I need to be in the morning to work. But what I have found is that Peel Hill in today's time has become dangerous. On July, on July the 4th of July, I worked at the VA hospital. And when I left, my trip to the VA hospital from Gilbert is used to be a five-minute ride. Now it's 15 minutes with the with the exchange, the interstate. So anyway, on that 4th of July, I was leaving the VA. I got to Martin Luther King five minutes from my house and Eden, and guess what? A speeding motorist came down, knocked me unconscious, right? Ran in, ran was speeding, ran a red light, hit my car, knocked me unconscious. I'm spinning around into cars sitting waiting to go forward. I eventually hit a pole. And at this point, I'm saying, this is what gave a whole new meaning to me when it says that Jesus take the wheel because nobody got hurt but me. And this was a change of ship. You know, a lot of people were out, pedestrians were all around, and I went swirling. I had an out-of-body experience where I was saying to myself, is this happening? Because if this is happening, this ain't going to end well, right? It's crazy. So now what am I dealing with? At this is my year to turn this to 70, you know, that milestone age. And I'm challenged, you know, I know I got a little PTSD coming up in here soon because I get a little shook up getting into a car. So what I'm saying is, as much as I know and as much resources as I have, I still need help. And we all need help. Everybody sitting up at this table is dealing with some challenge. I think we need a massive educational campaign to let us all know what we can do to help ourselves, take responsibility for ourselves and help each other. I'm an educator. My students are back there. They can just say they came to support, but they don't even know about what's out there. Okay, I've overstepped. I could say a whole lot because I've seen a lot, experienced a lot. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Please give us some money.
Yeah, and thank you. Thank you. Thank you for taking, thank you for taking the time to bring your students. That's that's awesome. Pat Brown. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, commissioners. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you on behalf of the Mental Health Levy, which, as you know, is so important to the community. My name is Patricia Brown, and I'm the chief operating officer at the Crossroads Center. The Crossroads Center has been in existence since 1951, and we're a treatment provider who provides residential care, medication-assisted treatment, outpatient services, outreach and prevention. There are many treatment providers in the community, and we all know the importance of the services we provide. We all have a story that gives us strength and hope to continue on with what we do to care for those in need. I will quickly share a story that resonates with me on a daily basis. I was in her lobby and lady walked in. She had on a jacket and a T-shirt, and she had something under her T-shirt. And I said, what is that? And she said, those are my take homes. I'm like, wow, you got a lot of them. So you're doing really good. And she looked at me and she said, you don't understand. And I'm thinking, what do you mean I don't understand? She said, this means I have my apartment, I have my job, and I have my kids back. And we often don't hear the positive stories of things that are going on. The mental health levy is so important to every citizen, every agency, every organization providing care because when we touch one person, we touch everyone in the community. On behalf of the Crossroads Center, on behalf of all the agencies who are here and those that we serve, we're asking for your support to help promote the levy. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And I just want to be clear, having worked with a lot of these agencies I mentioned about, ICRON is doing great work, but I'm sure all our agencies are doing great. So I didn't mean to leave anybody out. Kelly Halter.
Got my support group over there.
Okay.
Hello, commissioners.
Yes.
Yes, my name is Kelly Halter, and I am a Hamilton County resident, and I serve as the chief operating officer at Tender Mercies. Tender Mercies provides permanent supportive housing to individuals who are homeless who have severe and persistent mental illness. And I'm here to express my support for this levy. The COVID-19 pandemic has caused a rise, as so many of the individuals have said today, for the need for mental health services. In the first year of the pandemic alone, depression and anxiety jumped 25% per WHO, the World Mental Health, through the World Mental Health Report. And a single mental health issue can have a cascading negative impact on an individual's life. Just look at these stories we've heard today. According to HUD, 45% of Americans who become homeless experience mental illness. And once a person loses shelter, their mental illness significantly increases. And we look at this intersection between mental illness and also the and homelessness. So as Bill Brown so eloquently said, I want us just to consider that we have the ingredients for a perfect storm in our community. Not only is there a spike in cases of mental illness, but per the Greater Cincinnati Homeless Coalition, 41% of Cincinnati households cannot afford median rent for a one-bedroom apartment. Again, the intersection of mental illness and homelessness. So by supporting the Mental Health Services Levy, you will be reducing citizens' use of crisis services such as emergency departments, hospitals, homeless shelters and jails. And by supporting the Mental Health Services Levy, you, we, we all will demonstrate empathy. Empathy helps us see past the stigma of mental illness and instead see someone whose health has been so compromised that they have lost everything. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments. Sonya Kariko. Sonya Kariko.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having us all here today. I'm Sonya Kariko. And on behalf of Interact for Health, the Mental Health Addiction and Advocacy Coalition of Southwest Steering Committee, and as a resident of Hamilton County, we want to share some findings with you more recently around the struggles that people with mental health issues are having within our region. Interact for Health is a nonprofit philanthropic organization that's committed to improving health and outcomes and quality of life for people in the greater Cincinnati area. We have been addressing substance abuse, issue disorder needs for over the past 20 years. And for the past five, we've been working hard to tackle the opioid addiction. The Mental Health and Advocacy Coalition unifies diverse local voices to advocate for increasing awareness of issues that impact those affected by mental illness and addiction disorders. Recently, Interact for Health conducted a Greater Cincinnati COVID-19 Health Issue Survey, which showed that 32% of the people polled said their mental health has gotten worse. And more recently, in preparation for our new five-year strategic plan, through surveys, focus groups and key informant interviews, we spoke with over 1,900 individuals who said that mental health and substance abuse for adults and children is our number one public health problem in the area. And let me say that Hamilton County is worse off than some of our other communities. Hamilton County has an adult smoking rate of 17% compared to, of 20% compared to the nation's 17%. Excessive drinking rate is at 21% compared to 20% nationally. And a statistic that I find alarming, 39% of alcohol impaired driving death rates compared to 27 nationally. And this is according to the county health rankings. Along with that, black residents in our region are 1.6 times more likely to die of suicide than black residents nationally. And let's talk about our most vulnerable, our children, who are increasingly struggling with mental health. Nationally, one in five young people experience a mental health disorder such as anxiety, depression and substance use. And you'll find that I've included some statistics from Prevention First Local Student Youth Household Survey, which addresses some findings regarding mental health as well. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Susan Shelton. Susan Shelton. Sylvester McKenney. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, commissioners. I'm piggybacking off of Tender Mercies, Tommy, Kelly, Russ. My situation is quite different, I would say. I was homeless, abusing drugs, drinking alcohol. And had it not been for Tender Mercies, I would either be dead or in jail. And that's really, really, really serious to me because my mental couldn't take it. And then on top of that, I had a medical condition, which I had prostate cancer, wasn't aware of it because I was out doing everything but taking care of my health. And I went to a shelter and I spoke with a counselor and he stated to me, you need to get yourself together. You don't have too much, you don't have that much time. So I said to myself, I'm going to get treatment and I'm also going to go see a doctor because when you're out and about, you're out in the streets, you don't, you don't think about your health, your welfare, your hygiene, you don't think of anything. So I said a prayer with God. I said, you know, I got to get myself together because if I can't take care of myself, I can't take care of anybody else or anything else. So God said to me, he said, you get you in the shelter. And Tender Mercy came to mind after a counselor said, this place will help you get housing, get you together, your hygiene, job, treatment, and so on and so forth. So thanks to Tender Mercies, I'm here today. And thanks to me and God, no weapons formed against me shall prosper. If you want something, you got, you got to ask for it. Won't he do it? Won't he do it? Thank you for your time. And I know you're going to support this levy. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Tommy McDonald. Tommy McDonald. Welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. My name is Tommy McDonald. I'm here representing as a resident of Tender Mercies. I have been there for about eight months, seven or eight months. Before then, I was homeless and dealing with dealing with anxiety, bipolar and depression. Before then, before being at Tender Mercies, it was very tough on me. Just couch surfing, as as they say, couch surfing, going from home to home. Some days I didn't even have a home to go to. I would try to find a park, park bench or just lay down wherever I could. Living on my backpack every day, trying to figure out where I was going to eat and everything. On the opposite side, me coming to Tender Mercies, it's been a blessing. It's it's really been a blessing. I was a I was smoking cigarettes and drinking and stuff like that, but being at Tender Mercies, I finally completed my goal of stopping cigarettes. So that that's, thank you, thank you. That really means something to me because like at Tender Mercies, let me see, I think for three or four months ago, my mom passed away. And she was smoking cigarettes, like real heavy, and I really wanted her to stop. So that really pushed me into getting the help that I really need for like mental, mental illness and just everything like that. That really put me in the mindset to really get myself together. And without Tender Mercies, I really don't know where I will be right now. I really don't. So this, this really changes lives. It really does. It changed my life. I don't know about anybody else, but it changes mine. Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming forward. Michelle Booker. Michelle Booker. Okay. Okay. And next will be Beth Dooley. And then Christopher Hill. Yeah. Welcome.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Michelle.
Put the microphone down so you can, yeah. Put the microphone down so you can, yeah.
My name is Michelle Booker. I've been a Hamilton County resident for 53 years. I just want to speak on mental health. There's not a day that I don't sit at the bus stop and watch people go through mental health issues as they're walking down the street. They're having some type of conflict going on. I myself suffer from anxiety and depression. I've gone through ICRON to receive some services for my, for treatment with anxiety, the group therapy, job development. ICRON has supported me through these difficult times. And I'm grateful to have that experience. Speaking on that, there's many of my brothers and sisters who do not get the opportunity to experience help. There were long waiting lists. They're suffering with depression, anxiety, suicide, and alcoholism, a whole lot of other issues, and they're still waiting. We, as a great county, or Hamilton County, need to be the ones, because we are united as a whole in this county, in the United States of America. And they said, in United States of America, we are one, we all united. So when one hurt, we all hurt. And as a citizen of this county, I would like for you to please, please, continue with this levy. It's very important for us. It's very important for me and our lives depend on it. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Beth Dooley.
Welcome.
Thank you. Oh, thank you for the opportunity to address this group about this important topic of mental health. And my name is Beth Dooley and I am speaking here in support of the recommended increase to the Mental Health Levy in November. My son Brogan was a 21-year-old student at the University of Cincinnati in 2014 when he died by suicide. We thought it came out of the blue, but what I've since learned is that we, and I mean myself, his father, his five siblings, and all of his friends, were just ignorant about mental illness. He was missing for eight days and a lot of the area came out to help look for him on the eighth day, which was Memorial Day. They found Brogan. And I've never really been able to give back to the city and all the volunteers. So one way I'd like to do that is through education. Now I work for One in Five, which is a local nonprofit in the mental health arena. Our mission is to stop suicide by reducing the stigma, surrounding mental illness, and promoting optimal mental wellness. We do this by working in local schools to provide customized, evidence-based, mental health programs throughout Hamilton County. In addition to working with the staff, students, parents, and caregivers, we partner with community groups in the area to spread our mission in neighborhoods so that we can engage families where they actually live. We want to stop the stigma and start the conversation about mental health in Hamilton County. The need is growing for mental health treatment. And I'd like to, at this point, ask you again to renew the levy and with the increase recommended. I believe that we should invest in these services, that the levy funds, because the Mental Health and Recovery Services Board coordinates critical crisis mental health services to low-cost, added low-cost to taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And I'm also sorry for your loss. Christopher Hill.
Welcome.
Dear Commissioners, thank you for hearing my voice. My name is Christopher Hill. In the past, I have participated in individual and group counseling and employment services at agencies in Hamilton County and obtained a career working for a company making military packages, decontamination kits, and various supplies to our soldiers overseas. However, I lost my job during the pandemic. I became depressed, stressed, and I got worried about how I was going to pay my bills and I, and support my kids and find groceries for my family. I felt like my life was going nowhere. Things came crashing in on me. I wasn't able to accomplish anything and I felt myself spiraling down. I started hanging out with the wrong people and things were going bad for me. Then most recently, I started to put myself together and went to seek help again. I told, I was told there was a waiting list for counseling services. I was given a list of other agencies to try. They told me the same thing, a waiting list of services. One place said there was over 50 people waiting for help. I lost hope. I just need to get back on track. I was able to get some limited support, good support from ICRON Corporation, but still more counseling. I need help. I'm still on the waiting list. I feel we need more funding everywhere for mental health services, not just for me, but for everyone else waiting. Please support us in us asking as taxpayers for a little more money to help us and to help me. I want to feel good about myself again. I want to become more stable and work again. I want to feel like I have a purpose. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mike Morosky. And then next will be Shelley Batch, Batch, and Angelo Kennedy. Thank you.
President, Vice President, Commissioner, Mr. Ludo, thank you so much for having us all here today. I have a full-time volunteer job and I know how nice it is to have so many people to come see you. And normally, there aren't a lot of people here. Usually, people are coming because they're angry or because they're, they're asking for something. But what I've heard today is what I'm going to repeat to you, is that we have your back in asking for an increase to the Mental Health Services Levy and to putting the other two important levies on the ballot. I know it's not easy to ask for an increase during these times at all, but you have a tremendous amount of support, including the 95-member Human Services Chamber of Hamilton County, which I serve as Executive Director. Yesterday, our policy committee, which is chaired by CEO Jamal Boyd of the Crossroads Center, made a recommendation to the HSC Board, who voted unanimously to endorse all three levies, including the recommended increase to Mental Health Services. Many of our members are here today. You've heard a lot of them talked about very passionately, like Tender Mercies and like ICRON. And I'm no expert, but the leaders of these agencies and the people on the ground are. And they tell me that with a current status quo levy renewal, that it won't be enough, that some services would have to go. And even with an increase, there still likely won't be enough for the need in the community. But more need will be fed, filled from, to help people like you've heard from today. I don't think it's a secret to anybody here that mental health is a struggle. We've had members in my family struggle with it, people in the community struggle with it. And your support of this levy and putting it on the ballot, asking voters for an increase, would help this community. And please, just hear from me that the 95-member Human Services Chamber of Hamilton County, most of whom is represented here today and who receives funds from all three levies, has your back and will stand out in solidarity with you. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments. Sally Batch.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you for this opportunity to address you today in support of the Mental Health Levy and to advocate for your support to increase the levy. My name is Shelley Batch and I'm a social worker and I'm the Director of Mental Health Access Point, known as MAP, in our community. MAP is a Division of Central Clinic Behavioral Health. And our Mental Health Levy is absolutely critical for our work in this community so that we can continue to meet the needs of the children, families, and adults who need our services. In my 10 years at MAP, we've worked with thousands of children and families who have been adversely impacted by mental health issues. As many of the other speakers have shared, mental health issues escalate in the community and they have no boundaries. It impacts the communities from horrible acts of violence to creating lingering trauma within families. This is not an easy field to work in and I cannot imagine how much more difficult it would be without the support of the levy. I love my job, though. I'm humbled to have a role where we help children who have been subjected to abuse. We get to work with indigent families who have suffered from intergenerational trauma. We get to work with people who deserve a second chance because mental health has adversely impacted their life. None of this would be possible without the support of our Hamilton County Mental Health Recovery Services Board and our Mental Health Levy. We have great partnerships in our community. Our provider system works very well together. We collaborate with other systems like Child Welfare and Juvenile Court to develop forward-thinking programming. We have our Fair and Hope Programs that work with complex children cases. We have diversion dockets that address the root cause of crime, which is mental health, as other speakers have shared today. We work with our Probate Court to help keep our communities safe. We still have a lot to do. There are many areas to work on to continue to keep our community healthy and hopeful. Right now, you have the opportunity and you have the privilege to ensure that our mental health system in the county remains strong and will continue to meet the needs of our community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment. Angelo Kennedy.
Hey, how you doing? Thanks for having me. My name is Angelo Kennedy and I started my own business, a janitorial business. It's called Angelo, Socoria, and Peoples. And we, well, at first, we couldn't even get a contract and we was putting hours and hours of work day in, day out. And XL Develop had called me and asked me, can we clean like hallways and apartments for mental health? So we accepted that and now GCB and everyone calls. So we need the funding to keep our company going also. So I know we went and you guys went in. So I like to work with people like this to help them out and just keep our name and XL name and everybody going at the same time.
Yes, hi. My name is Linda Kennedy. And I retired from the city of Cincinnati and I worked with kids for over like 25 years down at Lincoln Center. And it starts in a home and what I do is I base my ideals off people. So basically, we are some type of help when you're working in communities in a center. And mental health is so real inside these housing. There's so many kids that are suffering in our community that just need like people or aid or a resource center inside the centers. So we need to get these kids while we can because they are our future. And please support this. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Congratulations on your business. And so we will connect you with, so we have what we call a bold list that puts minority businesses on the list if an opening comes up. And so we can possibly connect you. Leave one of your cards and then see how we can be of help. Okay, John Stewart. John Stewart, then Reverend James Cooley, and Mark Vanderlong. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you for this opportunity, first and foremost, Commissioner. My name is John Stewart and I'm a home administrator for 31 years. We are Vice President of HAU, which is a, which is a, excuse me. We provide housing and we also provide meals and other personal services for 65 homes and approximately 365 beds. Been doing this for a long time. First and foremost, we would definitely, before we get started, we would ask you all to support the tax lev, the Mental Health Tax Levy with increases. It's very important. We've been doing this, like I said again, 31 years. We've never seen the effects that COVID has had on our population. None of us in this room is probably, that has, that has not, family, friends, has not been touched by the pandemic, the effects of the pandemic. Now, our mental health population, SMD diagnosed, they're being adverse, affected a lot more. We struggled to deal with it as adults. Our population had to deal with it with layers of mental challenges. Their whole world was turned upside down. We had, one of the main things that was very paramount in their life was being able to go to day programs, socialize, and have some things that made them feel that they had some kind of normality in their struggles with their mental challenges. Like I said before, we also have seen it touch our family. Whenever, as with providing care, personal care services, meals, and all dealing with a lot of the budgetary things that you deal with. Inflation came in. We also know all these things that happen. But we, it became personal. Our granddaughter got bipolar. Our daughter, who worked with us, did a great job, championed many things, got bipolar. Our granddaughter, who went to a very nice school system, was very energetic, very talented, a cheerleader. During COVID, I'm going to stop, but during COVID, we saw her now very insecure. She even shakes when she talks. So this mental health thing is not just the business that we're in, providing these services, but also in our family. We ask you to dig deep, work hard. Please support this Mental Health Levy with the increases. It won't cover everything, but we hope that it's going to be a start to making some changes. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Reverend James Cooley. And mental health continues to be a priority for this board, just to let everybody know in case you end up leaving. Welcome.
Thank you for allowing me to be a part of this. I'm Pastor James E. Cooley, Senior, of New Covenant Community Church of God. As a pastor, you get many, many, many calls about various needs. Now, as a human being and as a pastor, when I am going throughout the city, I see people that I'm, I'm certain have some mental issues. And because of their bizarre behavior. But not only is there the bizarre behavior, but there are the people like you and me who deal with some mental illness, depression, and various types of illnesses. And so to aid in this, there needs to be the help that comes not only from people, I see people giving to the homeless, give a dollar or two. That, that, thank God for that, but that really doesn't scratch the surface. We need some serious monies going into the various types of help. Now, as a pastor, I can talk to people and all, but there are people with more expertise, but you need the funds to provide all of that. So I thank you so much for allowing me this opportunity to advocate for this and reach out and say, would you please give some more money to these endeavors? God bless each of you.
Thank you so much. Mark Vanderlong. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I'm Mark Vanderlong. I'm a Talbert House Board Member. And I'm also the Litigation Director for Ohio Justice and Policy Center. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you today in favor of an increase in the Mental Health Levy. The funds generated by the Mental Health Levy provide direct services to adults and children who have mental health needs that range from crisis intervention, counseling, case management, and medical management. Services include mental health treatment, housing, employment, vocational help, and court assistance. It includes contact, contracts with 25 behavioral health organizations, and that includes Talbert House and county departments. As an active board and community member, there has never been a greater need for mental health support than now. And I can speak from a personal perspective through my work at Ohio Justice and Policy Center. We represent folks who are returning to society from prison and those who have been imprisoned before and who are in the community having legal difficulties. The mental health services that are afforded through this levy and, and through organizations, and I'll, I'll be very expressive about Talbert House, is absolutely essential to provide. to provide the needs for these people to live productively in this community. So there is no doubt that we are all feeling the impact of rising costs. But this is something that is absolutely essential. And to provide the needed additional benefit that has been proposed is essential. I'm here to support this decision and I hope you carry through. Thank you very much for your time and attention.
Thank you for your comments. So we have Mike Morosky who thought he was gonna speak twice or what? Unless it's two of them in here. Okay, yeah. Hopefully not, huh? Okay, all right. That's okay. Linda Cedar, cider?
Thank you. It's cider.
Okay.
Good afternoon. My name is Linda Cedar and I'm the CEO of Caracol. I'm here to talk about the proposed levies. First of all, Caracol does not receive any levy funds, but our HIV-positive clients and those at risk for HIV rely on the services supported by the levies. I'm here in support of all three levies and the increase proposed for mental health. I own my own home. I live in Hamilton County and I have several rental properties. I will gladly pay the increase in taxes on my properties to support these services. I will willingly pay my share so that the elderly are cared for, that low-income people receive medical care and that substance abuse and mental health services are available to all, not just for those who can afford them. I know from my work at our agency, the COVID has hit our community hard. We all know people who have lost jobs, housing, been affected by substance abuse and mental health issues. The elderly have been even more alone and isolated than ever before. This is the time to step up and support those with the least. Our community relies on the very services that all three levies support. I'm worried that services will be cut if the mental health levy is not increased. The need for services already far outstrip our capacity. With suicides, domestic violence, drug overdoses, gun violence, all rampant in our community, how can we not prioritize mental health? I know it is unpopular to raise taxes. You're in a tough position. And I want you to, I want to ask you to do what is right, not what is popular. Our community is counting on you right now and believe me, we as a group will have your back. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Dr. Michael Jennings.
Thank you. Thank you, first of all, for having this forum. I think it's uplifting and really gives us a lot of optimism, hearing all the great work that all these organizations are doing. I'm Dr. Michael Jennings. I've been a member of the Board of the St. Vincent's Pollo Charred Well Pharmacy and as a recipient, one of the recipients of the Indigent Fund Levy, I'm here to, to talk a little bit about their work. Let me start by supporting all of these fine folks with the mental health community. They do remarkable work. They are unsung heroes. And not surprisingly, the work of the pharmacy really does integrate with their work as well. I want to just cover two points very briefly. The first is really to point out the impact our work is having on the local hospital systems, both financially and in terms of really kind of downloading some of the, some of the work that they'd have to be doing where our service is not available to those most in need. We do a kind of a quick analysis for all of our clients who come in to get their medications for free. We look at their hospital utilization before they come and then we look at it for six months afterwards. And a quick back of the napkin kind of calculation would suggest that we probably save somewhere between $5 and $6 million a year to the local hospitals by preventing emergency room visits, hospitalizations and improving the health of our clients. The second thing I want to cover very briefly is simply a summary of some of our recent additions to our clinical services. We are staffed by pharmacists. Pharmacists in Ohio can do a lot of work relative to chronic care management, diabetes, chronic lung disease, smoking cessation. We're now doing immunizations. We've broadened our footprint. Our facility in Western Hills is now open four days a week. Our facility right around the corner on Bank Street just added Saturday hours. We've hired a nurse practitioner and now we're providing primary care services on our premises. Many of our clients over the years either lost their doctor, never had a doctor, and now we can actually have a provider continue their medication so that they don't land back in the hospital. So as much as I can say in two minutes, thank you all for your work and for your advocacy.
Thank you so much for your comments. Jennifer Steele. Jennifer Steele and then Kristy Whitaker.
Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. I'm the CEO of Meals on Wheels of Southwest Ohio and Northern Kentucky. As you know, the Council on Aging works with a large network of contracted organizations to provide services directly to elderly services program clients, including my organization. And in addition to being the CEO, I'm a social worker and I see the impact of these programs every day. We receive funding from the Senior Services Tax Levy via contract with the Council on Aging to provide home-delivered meals to clients directly enrolled in the elderly services program. And we're often the only people that they may see during an entire week where they're family in many cases. And there's so much power and potential in that network. I'm sure that you won't be surprised to hear that the current inflation and economic environment has made it really difficult for organizations like ours and others in the network to provide these really critical services. Traditionally, the Council on Aging's contracts have provided increases of about 1% to 2% every year built in for inflation. But our organization, for instance, is experiencing much, much greater increases than that. Just as a few examples, over the past year, we've experienced a 39% increase in fuel costs. Just in one food item, we've experienced a 64% increase in the cost of sliced turkey and a 25% increase in wages. Despite all of that, the Council on Aging has continued to be a really great partner and a responsible steward of our county's tax dollars in the face of these shortages in workforces, inflation and supply chain issues by working with us directly and proactively exploring options to minimize their impact on ESP's budget without sacrificing quality and service to clients. Some examples of that are structuring some of the rate increases with flexibility for rollbacks if costs drop back down, considering options for additional rate flexibility increases for uncertainty in the year to come and closely collaborating with its provider network to address the downstream effects of the global pandemic. The Board of Commissioners, taxpayers and the families served by this program should feel really confident that the Council on Aging and our dedicated provider network are working to provide the highest quality services at the lowest possible cost in order to serve as many tax people with the tax dollars available during these challenging times. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Kristy Whitaker. And next is Shelby Stout.
Hello, my name is Kristy Whitaker and I have worked at Council on Aging for almost 26 years in various programs. Since November 2020, I have worked in the Fast Track Home program, which is funded through the Elderly Services Program. During this time, I've seen the impact this program has on older adults who are being discharged from area hospitals and rehab facilities. Though things like meals, housekeeping and transportation may seem simple on their own, taken together and combined with the support from a professional care transition specialist, these services are vital to ensuring older adults complete a safe and successful discharge to their homes. Fast Track Home is proven to prevent rehospitalizations, which ultimately saves taxpayers money. My client Joan is a perfect success story. She had knee replacement surgery in December 2021. With assistance from her son, her goal was to remain in her home and not to have to go back to the hospital or have a rehab stay in a nursing facility. The Fast Track Home program initially ordered medical equipment when she was discharged home. However, after speaking with Joan during our initial visit, it was evident that Joan and her son were struggling to manage her care. The son was working full-time, trying to take care of Joan and still managing his own household. Joan and I discussed her needs and what would best assist them both to make her discharge successful. An emergency response system and home-delivered meals were ordered and these services provided her son some relief in his caregiving duties and provided Joan with the services she needed to remain in her home. Many times, an older adult is unsure of the exact services they will need when they are discharged from a hospital or rehab stay. Fast Track Home provides the support they need to complete a successful care transition, including in-home care services, a home visit and follow-up calls from a care transition specialist. Fast Track Home meets a vital need in our community for older adults and their caregivers, helping older adults remain safe and independent in their homes where they want to be. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Shelby Stout. Next is Carrie Pardon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Shelby Stout. I'm here to speak in support of the Senior Services Levy. I work in our Care Transitions Department, specifically with Fast Track Home. I'm the Care Transitional Manager for, at Council on Aging. Our program is supported by the Senior Services Levy. We provide support to older adults transitioning from hospital and skilled nursing facility to home. Our goal is to empower older adults to take an active role in improving and maintaining their health through case management, education services and assistance with navigation of community and health-related resources. Fast Track Home is a short-term program, up to 60 days, with the goal of engaging older adults with a bedside visit before discharge and setting up needed support and services to begin immediately when the client returns home. Our team supports discharge planners in hospitals and facilities across Hamilton County. We have care managers on-site in many local hospitals, including UC Medical Center, Christ, Good Stand and Jewish Hospitals. Our program uses the Coleman Care Transitions Model, which is an evidence-based program designed to reduce readmission rates, reduce medication errors and support the complex healthcare needs of older adults during times of transition. Within three days of discharge, our care managers complete an in-home visit with the older adult. They provide health coaching, complete an environmental assessment, review discharge instructions and medications, review follow-up appointments and focus on teaching older adults self-management skills related to improving and maintaining their health. Clients who are eligible can also receive services similar to what we offer in Elderly Services Program, home care assistance, transportation, home-delivered meals and home medical equipment. We can also connect older adults to caregiver support, chronic care management programs, a benefit specialist, our health and wellness programs for matter, like such as Matter of Balance and chronic care programs. And all of this is made possible through the funds that we receive from the Senior Services Levy.
Thank you so much for your comments. Carrie Pardon, probably didn't pronounce it right, but. Welcome.
Hi, thank you for allowing me to speak today on behalf of the intake specialist, the front door at Council on Aging.
Just a little bit, yeah.
Prior to coming to COA, I worked for the Hamilton County Commissioners as a 911 dispatcher and before that as an intake specialist for Mental Health Access Point. So I have experience working in environments that are sometimes labeled call centers that are really much more than call centers and my work at COA is no different. We know that there are no cookie cutter solutions when it comes to providing for the needs of the seniors in our community. Intake specialists are not limited to a few standardized answers. We know that each caller's concerns are as unique as the individual on the other end of the line and we stand prepared to partner with each client in helping them achieve their goals. We act as navigators and investigators on behalf of seniors presenting with a range of needs. We act as libraries of information about the services available from food pantries, housing and utility resources, cooling and warming centers during our most extreme weather events, navigating them to warming and cooling centers. We get to tell people about the Elderly Services Program and programs like Passport and we make referrals to family members for caregiver support. Very often, we get calls from family members of seniors who are completely overwhelmed and stressed when they call. They know mom needs help, but they have no idea where to begin or what help even looks like in their situation. And at the end of each call, my callers know my name. They know how they can always reach me if they want to speak with me as many times as they need to, to get all of their questions answered and their concern addressed as their needs change. My favorite part of being an intake specialist is when I can take a caller from distressed and anxious at the beginning of a call to having them laughing and conversing easily with me by the end. And I can tell that they are so much more relaxed and positive because they finally feel like there's hope and direction and some help. And it might be the first time in a long time that they felt that. And fortunately for me, that is not a rare occurrence at Council on Aging. So I encourage you to support the Senior Services Levy. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Heidi Thompson and then Hannah Nixon.
Hi.
Hi.
I don't know. I'm sitting here and I'm torn because you know, I have a story to tell and I'm a former client of theirs and I went through Cat House and I got sober and now I do their outreach in the community. So this is very close to my heart. My daughter, once I had the ability and the opportunity that was given to me to recover, my kids started to recover. My daughter leaves for college in August on a scholarship in Adrian, Michigan. She is the first, one of the first females in history to do that in wrestling. And I'm torn as I'm sitting here because I don't know if I should read from this paper, if I should tell you that same little girl that I just spoke about leaving for that college opportunity on a scholarship. I think I noticed yesterday she's cutting on herself. So I'm sitting here torn and I just want to let you know that, you know, the opportunities in this community that have been given to me, my family has made great strides. But as I just told you, that my family still has a lot more growing to do. While I'm out in the community, I see the importance of, you know, I work in, I work in substance abuse, but I struggled with mental health too. And I know a lot of things, substance abuse stems from mental health. So I'm here to speak on behalf of the increase on the mental health levy. I hope that I'm making a difference out there and I know that these individuals in this room are making a difference. But we're gonna need the increase on this levy if we plan to continue to make a difference in our community. And thank you guys for taking the time to listen to me. And I hope that there's great things to come in our community. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Hannah Nixon and then Viola Harrison. Welcome.
Thank you. Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to address an issue that is so important to the people in our community. My name is Hannah. I am 21 years old. I recently graduated high school in May of this year, something many thought I would not have the opportunity to be able to do. 10 years ago, I was experiencing severe trauma that resulted in me being placed in foster care. Five years ago, I was in a psychiatric facility, struggling with the effects of my trauma, battling suicide and fighting for a reason to stay alive. Today, I am alive thanks to the services that I received. I was in the HOPE program through Mental Health Access Point. I was able to engage in art, music, horse and trauma therapy. I was also given many other opportunities and services were made available to me that were the key factors into me getting better. Having had these experiences, I have lived through the stressors that many youth, adults, providers and families still face today. Those struggling with mental health need our help as a community to become successful as well. With the help I received, I was able to heal and overcome the obstacles and challenges that I faced. Our community depends on the services that the Mental Health and Recovery Service Board provides. Without these services, I would not be able to stand here today in front of all of you, building a life worth living. I encourage you today to please support an increase in the mental health levy to help those like me who need you all more now than ever. Thank you.
Hannah, Hannah. I just want to thank you for sharing and also thank you for what an eloquent speaker you are and great success to you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
It's gonna take, it's gonna take.
Pick up your microphone.
I'm not gonna take up my time, but I'm not the kind of person that can come in front of people. But because of the cause, because of what we're trying to do.
The interpreter can't hear you, so just get right up to the mic.
Okay, so I was saying, I'm not the type of person that can actually stand in front of people and, and, and give a spiel. But because of the purpose of the things that we're currently trying to achieve with mental health consumers, I got, I was, I'm able to do, find this courage to be able to do that.
I start out just sharing a little bit about me. My name is Viola Harrison. I first, firsthand experienced mental health myself.
I first, firsthand experienced mental health myself. I worked for a company, Parkland Gamma, for 22 years. Life, I call it "life happens." I had an injury which added to, the injuries added to me having dealing with stress. I then participated, I then participated in a program at ICRON, ICRON Corp. At that time, I went through a vocational training and then, then was able to get stable. Obtained a vocational training and stability. I applied for a position at a company called The One Line. I was hired and moved up in the company, and now I'm the Director of The One Line. The One Line is, The One Line employs persons who have experienced mental health themselves and serve those with, and serve those through a phone system that we call a support line. And what they do, they make phone calls into this, into the system, and it's a 24-hour, 365-type system. However, most recently, we have, haven't been able to keep up with the demands of, of the additional calls, which was like 500 calls a month, have been added to it. This business, this One Line has been in, been around for about 28 years. Never seen these many calls and as, haven't seen as many calls as we're seeing now. Let me drop, it's, 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 this is crisis that we receive, this, the funding that we're requesting for today. A lot of times, it may keep someone out of the hospital, and then we have, we're getting calls in where people are saying, you know, you passed this number on to me and say, "Call for the support." But when I call the line, it's busy and I can't get through. That's a crisis.
Well, thank you for your comments. Okay.
All right.
All right. Thank you so much. And I was just thinking, I was thinking of the people that have come up to talk. I say over 90, 95% of the people are saying, are saying that they have problems with anxiety. But it's just a testament to the agencies that they're working with that they're able to stand up in front of us and talk about how important these agencies are for them. Randy Strunk and then Jill Vanner.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Randy Strunk. I'm the CEO of ICRON Corporation. We've been around since 1969. We provide behavioral health and employment services to those with severe mental health issues. I haven't been around quite that long. I've been around about 30 years, though. And I provide a lot of direct service too. So I engage with our participants every single day. I still see people for therapy. I still see people to help them get jobs and really have seen just exacerbated anxiety, depression from a lot of our participants. And, and all the years I've been there, I've been there 30 years, this is the most support and most need requested that I've ever seen since I've been there. We have waiting lists for counseling services, waiting lists for employment services, medication services. We do our best to contact people every month to make sure they're doing okay. We send them to other agencies. They experience the same thing. So that definitely shows that there's a need out there and a growing demand. We really pride ourselves in getting people in. It takes a lot of courage to ask for help, and then to say that you're on a waiting list causes people to lose hope, causes people not to trust the mental health system. So supporting our Mental Health Levy, we know that everyone here does that. But the question is whether you're going to support an increase in services, and I hope today from all the speakers, and I want to give a round of applause to them. You guys did awesome coming here. I hope that, that shows you and all the information that's presented that with an emphatic yes, that you'll support an increase to this levy for the needed services we have. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. Jill Vanner. Welcome.
Hello. I'm speaking on behalf of ICRON and The One Line, also on behalf of mental health. I lost a brother who shot himself in the head, so I've been there. He was 24. I have a daughter who is 23. She also went through ICRON, and she had some mental issues, PTSD, bipolar, depression types of, I've also been through there. I've also went through the program myself where I went through ICRON and got my job working with The One Line for seven years. So it's definitely needed to help the people, to support the people who may think that they can't make it. You know, sometimes you just need an ear. You just need somebody to say, "Hang in there." You just need somebody to say, "Don't give up," you know, "Don't throw in the towel." You just might need somebody to just be able to vent or whatever. So it would be a blessing to just be able to keep the levy and to make the increase because there are times where people are calling and can't get through, and I've had people to say, "Well, I've been calling for two or three days and haven't been able to get through." So we, we need to be able to increase our lines so that we can get, hire more people actually, because we're open 24 hours a day. We work even on the holidays so that somebody will be able to call and say, "Hey, I just need to talk to you. We just need to vent." You know, I mean, we have our boundaries, but we also have our resources. So whenever we can't say or do, then we'll let them know who they can talk to or whatever, or sometimes they may even might want a song. I'm a praise and worship leader, and I don't mind singing, you know. So I just believe that if the whole world would just lend a hand and just be there for each other. Just be there for each other. Don't mind praying for each other. Just be there for each other. Amen. Keep us on the levy. Give us an increase.
Thank you so much. And I'm also, I'm also sorry for your loss. Melissa Harmeling. And then next is Robert McCrery.
Hello, my name is Melissa Harmeling, and I am also with ICRON Corporation, but we are just one of many organizations here in Hamilton County that, you know, receive support through the Mental Health Levy and provide wonderful services in the community. So thank you so much for the opportunity to speak with you today. I've been working in the field for about 16 years, and similar to what others have said, I've never seen this much need before for mental health services, which, you know, as we know, that's, that's not in a silo that, you know, folks struggle with difficulties finding employment when they're struggling with mental health, substance abuse, many, many other issues. So just wanted to speak to the fact that it's, you know, asking for the support for not just the renewal of the Mental Health Levy, but also the increase. And we thank you for your continued support for, you know, this very important issue. There have been other dollars, you know, CARES dollars, those types of things that have come in, but those are only temporary. And it is so important that we've seen for our folks to have consistent care, consistent providers. And with the increase, you know, small increase in the Mental Health Levy, we're hopeful that we can serve more of these folks that need the help and continue the wonderful and consistent services that all of the organizations provide. So thank you so much for your time today.
Thank you for your comments. Robert McCrery. And then Chevelle West. Chevelle West, yeah. Is Robert here? Okay. And after Chevelle West is Shannon Simmons. Welcome, sir. Yes, right up here. Yeah, right up there. Yeah. No, right over here to the podium. Uh-huh. You're fine. Okay.
Good evening, you all. I am Dick R.L. McCrery at Exile 872 Rockdale Avenue, Cincinnati, Ohio. And with the gracious person, Stenelle West. She's a great lady. I want you all to know that. And with the, I can't walk that good, so they just provided me with a upright walker. I haven't had time to use it yet, but with me. And I appreciate it. She worked very dearly and hard with me to get it. So that's all I can tell you right now because this is a wonderful program. And I'm a singer man, my wife passed, and I'm living by myself, but I'm willing to vote for it, which I know is going to increase my tax with one income, but I'm gonna vote for it anyway. With God's grace and help, I know I'm gonna make it. So I have no doubt. Because the Lord is on my side. And I believe, just like, just like, just like the word says, you have not because you ask not. Seek he first the kingdom of God and all his righteousness be added unto you. So when you seek God, live right and do his word and pay your tax. But that's where your blessings come from. Give and share receipt. May God bless you. May God keep you until we meet again.
Thank you. Hey, Chevelle West.
Good afternoon. My name is Chevelle West, and I am a patient navigator with CareStar. I would like to use the time for my testimony to shed light on the continued need for person-centered patient navigation services CareStar provides in Hamilton County. Cutting our program from the levy would mean the only navigation assistance available to seniors is what you are about to hear. I urge you to prevent that from happening. You would see how that would be very hard for a senior. Thank you for the opportunity. Have a great day.
Thank you. Shannon Simmons. And then Sally Johnston.
Hi, I'm Shannon Simmons. I work for CareStar and the Senior Patient Navigation Program. And I just wanted to let you know basically that I'm very, very excited to tell you about the program, and I appreciate the, the time you're giving us to present today. The Senior Patient Navigation Program is needed in our community, along with OBLTSS, what Chevelle just shared with you, which is, you know, an automated line, where, where we provide something that's more personal. We care about our people. And not that OBLTSS does not, but we provide that personal care. OBLTSS has a manual that they rely on, and they direct, they direct customer service people to that manual from the Ohio Medicaid Consumer Hotline. So again, they get the automated toll-free hotline with pre-recorded messages where this is just a cookie-cutter solution. Where, as we know, our seniors sometimes need a lot more personal service, and they also need customized person-centered care. And I'm asking you to consider the individual and the, and make person-centered care a person-centered again. So there's a lot of people who aren't, aren't eligible for income-based public assistance, and they struggle financially. So I'm urging you to ask yourself if the OBLTSS call center is a viable solution for everyone. Instead, even though a standardized approach is not beneficial for some of us, and not necessarily beneficial for the seniors, so I'm asking for you to offer an extra layer of support from CareStar, the senior patient navigators, so we can work with the seniors and continue to point them in the right direction. And so they're not lost in the shuffle. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Sally Johnston. And then Cynthia Walker.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you for having me. My name is Sally Johnston. I'm a licensed social worker and a clinical manager with CareStar, worked for 10 years this August. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today regarding senior patient navigation. I understand the Tax Levy Review Committee perceived there to be duplication between CareStar Senior Patient Navigation and the Ohio Benefits Long-Term Services and Supports for OBLTSS Front Door Program, which is led by Council on Aging at the regional level. CareStar respectfully but strongly disagrees with this perspective. While both programs promise to connect individuals with community resources and help them to navigate the healthcare system, one of the key differences to highlight is CareStar's commitment to in-person services. Alternatively, the OBLTSS call center is a call center. It's accessed through a toll-free hotline, as you heard. It's complete with pre-recorded automated messages and touch-tone keypad prompts. These can be daunting, confusing, and frustrating for our clientele. Council on Aging assured the Tax Levy Review Committee that they too have an in-person response team. However, Council on Aging reports an average of three walk-ins for front door support navigation per month. Less than 1% of individuals served in the program being compared with CareStar's Senior Patient Navigation. While the OBLTSS Front Door serves an important purpose, it was already in existence when the community identified a need for senior patient navigation and brought this attention, brought this to the attention of the Commissioners. I urge you to ask yourselves if this toll-free call center is truly the solution that Hamilton County had in mind for seniors in need. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
Madam President, can I just, can I just add, ask that you gave some statistics about Council on Aging. Is it possible you provide your statistics to us in writing? You don't have to come back up, but just in writing, get it to the administrator and to all of us board office. Okay, okay. Well, we just want to put it in the record. Thanks.
Thanks. Cynthia Walker.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Cynthia Walker, and I am a patient navigator and have been with CareStar since 2020. Before I begin, I would like to take a moment to thank you for your time and your thoughtfulness in determining the appropriate use of levy funding. As a, an organization who contracts with government entities, CareStar too works diligently to conserve and maintain good stewardship over taxpayers' dollars. Being a senior myself and a Hamilton County taxpayer, I would not advocate to continue this program if I did not believe in the services CareStar offers. And for this reason, I am asking for consideration to continue senior patient navigation. Over my years in the field, I have grown to appreciate how impactful professional relationships can be and how much they influence the outcome of people that we serve. To me, there is no question that trust and rapport have the power to make any service more satisfying and more effective. To this concept is one of the substantial differences between CareStar Patient Navigation and programs that use a round-robin process to direct callers to available agents. The individual is just received The individual is just received an assistance from the front door, may hang up the phone, call back immediately and connect with a new worker from a different agency. Well, as a senior, let me tell you, that can feel hopeless and absolutely exhausting sometimes when we must retell our story beginning each time that we connect with a new representative. Through Senior Patient Navigation, my participants and I work together as a team. Through the good and bad, I experience the successes and the setbacks right alongside them. They share more with me because they feel comfortable knowing I have their best interest at heart. Our job rarely is easy, but I have come to terms with the challenges I face knowing that the help I provide makes a difference and around every corner, I have a chance to brighten someone's day. Commissioners, I thank you for this opportunity and have a great day.
Thank you for your comments. Tracy Sipple and Lindsay Kaluba. Tracy. Okay. Lindsay Kaluba.
Good afternoon. Thank you. I wanted to start by thanking the Commissioners for the opportunity to speak. My name is Lindsay Kaluba. I am a family nurse practitioner at the St. Vincent de Paul Charitable Pharmacy. I provide free healthcare to our neighbors and these are people who, without our services, would not be able to afford the healthcare services that they need. Without the charitable pharmacy, countless patients would wind up being hospitalized for uncontrolled diseases, including diabetes, high blood pressure, breathing issues, just to name a few. These medical conditions, if they're left untreated long enough, they certainly can prove fatal. So I can state confidently as a medical provider that the charitable pharmacy program is saving lives of people in our community. The patients I care for on a daily basis have diverse healthcare needs. Some are discharged from the hospital with no way to afford their medications. And they don't have a primary care provider to provide long-term solutions and to continue following them to provide healthcare. Others have lost their jobs or insurance due to the pandemic and so they can no longer afford their copays or office visits. And others simply have not been to a doctor in years. And these patients are in need of a physical exam and to establish care with a primary provider for ongoing medical care. This year, we have been able to expand our program and start providing our neighbors with basic medical tests. Some of these include checking cholesterol, electrolytes, urinalysis, strep testing, things like that. This allows us to further manage their medical conditions with the data that we can collect from these tests. My dream is to provide the highest quality of healthcare possible to these patients. And these are people in our community who truly need it the most. I like to say that the, the program is changing people's lives, but working there and working with people who on a daily basis are crying in my office saying, I don't know how I would have afforded a doctor or medicine without this. It's truly changed my life as well. Regardless of patient background, the charitable pharmacy provides hope and compassionate care for those in need. So I just am requesting the continuation of the levy to help those. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Pamela Farley and then Lydia Bailey. Pamela Farley, okay. Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you for seeing us today. My name is Pamela Farley. I am a patient client at St. Vincent de Paul. And without St. Vincent de Paul, I wouldn't have been able to get a lot of my medications. I have diabetes, high blood pressure. And I was taken, where I was taking 20 doses, I was taking 10 because I couldn't afford the medication. I was taking blood pressure every other month because I didn't have the money for it. And St. Vincent came into my life and got me all my medications. Medications that they didn't have. They went to the pharmacy company. They had me fill out papers to help get my medication and sent there. And they distributed me every month. A lot of my friends and neighbors, I also have sent them to St. Vincent de Paul because they were taking their medicine, then have to spend down money or the copay to get their medicine. St. Vincent, they help us with medical supplies. They even sometimes come and help bring it to your house if you're not able to get it. I volunteered at St. Vincent de Paul to give back to them. And I'm hoping that you will see fit to give them the funding or an increase also to help them continue their good work they're doing. It's helping so many people in the community with medicine. And they just opened up a new office to try to help other peoples in other positions. You know, some in the west side, some downtown. So they're trying to help everyone all over. And I really appreciate it if you could help them continue with the funding.
Thank you. And we appreciate you volunteering also. Thank you. Lydia Bailey. Welcome.
Hi, thank you. My name is Lydia Bailey and I serve as a pharmacist and operations manager at St. Vincent de Paul Charitable Pharmacy. Just as a background of our relationship with the Indigenous Care Levy, the pharmacy began our position with that levy in 2013. And we've been approved for two other cycles since then, always at $150,000 per year. This funding source has been one of our most reliable and sustainable that we have in our budget. And I just want to say thank you for the stability that this levy provides to our program. But because we have more patients, more prescriptions to fill, more services that we offer and a higher quality of care, we've asked to increase to $200,000 a year. We have truly grown into a different pharmacy than when we came to you first 10 years ago. And so the new increased funding will help us continue to do that. Our director, Rusty Carrington, I think said it best. He said, "St. Vincent de Paul pharmacists never have to answer the question, how many prescriptions did you fill today?" Instead, we get to answer the question, how healthy are your patients? And that is our metric of success. How healthy are our patients and how healthy are your Hamilton County residents? So in 2013, we came here and we told you how many prescriptions we filled. Now I can stand here and tell you how many emergency room visits we prevented, how many readmissions we stopped, how many patients quit smoking, how many got their diabetes under control, how many are connected to primary care. We can show you healthier Hamilton County residents and we can keep doing that with an increased renewal of the levy. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Shilla Knighton. Linda, Linda Knight is the actor, Shilla Knighton. Is she here? Okay. Linda Knight. Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners, for giving me the opportunity to talk with you. I too can talk about St. Vincent de Paul because they helped me to get in touch with CareStar. CareStar helped me as a senior. I'm an 80-year-old senior and believe me, being older is a challenge and we need help. I received a grant from the city. And for two years, nothing was done about that grant. No one helped me to find out who I could go to, who's going to help me with the grant, who's going to fulfill the grant or anything. I met Cynthia through CareStar. She got on the case after two years. The third year, I did get the help that I needed from the funding that had been given to me or awarded to me three years before. So even though you're giving out and helping seniors, you also, we also need people to help us to get the help that you've given us, to know where to go, to know who to seek help from. It's not easy for us to do that. We don't know all of these things, all the things about what's going on, who to go to, who to ask. Cynthia took me by the hand. She led me through it and I'm thankful for her. And I'm thankful for you for listening to me and to also know that you will probably, I hope, keep this levy going and even more so to help us seniors. You know, we look like we're healthy. We look like we could do this and some of us think we can do this. We're trying to maintain our independence, but we need help doing that also. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your comments. We have Brenda Love and then Janika Woolley. Brenda Love. Welcome.
Hello to all Commissioners. We're so well off having you at our disposal to help us. I'm a senior, obviously. I became acquainted with COA and Star Care, CareStar some while ago. And it was like a burden lifted off me because I was getting so overwhelmed with so many prescriptions I had to take for so many things going on with this physical body. And then I was awarded Cynthia Watson, who came to my home and helped me so much. And I felt lighter. I felt relieved. I felt there's someone that can really, really is helping me. And it was a godsend because I was kind of on my own. Most of my family had passed away and my three sons lived in different states. And my senior son has come to live with me to try to help me, but he's very sick himself. So we kind of help each other. But I feel so relieved knowing what's out there, being able to take advantage of some of the wonderful programs that are available for me. Like the chair of St. Vincent de Paul has just been a godsend because I couldn't afford all these medications at all. And I just want to say thank you for supporting this wonderful organization. And hopefully you can keep it up. And if my rich uncle gets out of the poorhouse, I'm going to give you all the money I can. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for taking the time. Okay, so Janika Woolley and Patricia Burson McBride.
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Johnika Woolley. I'm, I've been participating in navigation program, in the navigation program for probably a little bit over a year. And prior to the healthcare services and things I've received from them, I was a total mess because I was so confused and didn't know where to turn to do different things. Whereas I used to be, I was able to do these things on my own, but I've been diagnosed with dementia coming on. So anyway, I was not able to communicate and find out what things I needed to do and so on and so forth. So CareStar came into my life and then they got me a lot of different things. Home modifications, inside and outside my home. And also my insurance, I had health insurance. I have health insurance through my previous employer, but also helped me get a Medicaid card. And I've been in the hospital on several different occasions. And they also helped me when I got out of the hospital with nursing care and set up and all that kind of thing. And anyway, then also I've felt depressed and suicidal. And my CareStar Navigator has taught me through things and made me feel secure that I didn't have to, you know, it wasn't the end of the road. So I really appreciate them and pray that you'll keep the CareStar going.
Thank you so much for your comments.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Everyone who handed in a card, you were able to speak. Okay. Okay, we have some people on the Zoom call that would like. Yes, ma'am. What's your name? Okay, come on, come forward. Yeah, you were the last one. Right here. Welcome.
Good afternoon to you all.
Good afternoon.
I'm with CareStar. Shannon Simmons is my case manager. And she have really been there for me. Like if I get letters from Javon Family Service, she always, I do a three-way so I can understand what the, what the letter means.
Can you bring your mic up just a little so more people can hear you? Good, thanks.
She will help me out with letters I get in the mail from Javon Family Service. And sometimes I don't understand some of it and we would get on a three-way and talk about it. And then my cholesterol medicine, she helped me get that through a program. And it's been real prosthetic for us to keep CareStar, you know, in our life now. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Thank you for your comments. Hey, we have a few people on Zoom. M. Thompson. Welcome.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Awesome. I'm Mariah Thompson and Diane Parker from City Gospel Mission. We're an emergency shelter and we serve about 60 men every night. Only about 30% of our residents are connected to services, whether that be physical, mental health services. We see a great need for expanded services in our community. We use some services, many community services that come in-house who are nearby. We see a reduced, reduced numbers of ER visits when we have people who are connected to services. We've seen many needs for more care in a variety of ways. One specific need we've seen an increase in is for seniors, which I know has been addressed. And we have one example to share as well.
Yes. About a year ago, we, a resident came, a member of Hamilton County came to us and needed a place to stay. He's in his 60s. He has some minor health concerns. He ended up catching COVID while staying at our shelter. As a result of having COVID, he now has an oxygen tank. And even with his health, health issues being monitored by a doctor, it's not the best care he could get because we don't have adequate transportation to get him to and from doctor's appointments. So right now, the responsibility of his care is falling on our staff. And we don't have the formal medical education to help him. And we're relying a lot on calling emergency medical services to get him to places that he need. We definitely need an increase in his levy. We've also seen things with dental concerns as far as dentures, Medicaid-friendly dentists, senior healthcare needs, nursing home referrals, transportation issues of, as we've already mentioned, setting clients up with PCP appointments, mental health support, as well as substance abuse-related needs as well. Ultimately, providing resources to meet these needs will help shorten the length of time clients are in the shelter and increase the possibility of them being more self-sufficient in housing.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments. We have Bobby Barbie. Next.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good afternoon. I must say before I start, Ms. Johnika, you are a beautiful soul. My name is Bobby Joe Barbie. As a senior, as a patient navigator with CareStar, I have embraced my responsibility to advocate for those that I serve, which is why I've come to speak with you to contest the duplication that the Tax Levy Review Committee has identified between CareStar Senior Patient Navigation has identified between CareStar Senior Patient Navigation and the Ohio Benefits Long-Term Services and Supports Front Door. The following social needs are addressed by our CareStar's Patient Navigation Assessment Tool. However, these important topics are not addressed by OBLTSS staff. First off, we asked, does the individual have enough money to buy their food? Do they eat a healthy diet? Do they have stable housing? Is the individual having problems paying their utility bills? Does the individual feel safe in their home and do they feel safe around all the people in their life? The OBLTSS program was launched in 2017 and it already existed when Hamilton County identified these gaps in services and the need for a senior patient navigation program. These gaps still exist and now more than ever, our seniors need help to overcome these barriers. The OBLTSS Front Door serves, serves its purpose, but how disappointing it would be if the program Hamilton County relied on to help individuals navigate each of these challenges never even asked if they struggled with these problems in the first place. I urge you and encourage you to consider this as you make your final decisions for the senior service tax levy. I thank you from all of us at CareStar.
Thank you for your comments. And our final speaker is Tiara Rachel. Tiara, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you and good afternoon. My name is Tiara Rachel and I am the supervisor for the Patient Navigation Team here at CareStar. I've been nurse for 25 years and I've worked for CareStar since 2011. My team and I are very committed to empowering participants to engage in their own healthcare services to improve their health outcomes and quality of life. Our patient navigators help participants develop a list of questions for their physicians, provide tools such as weekly logs to routinely monitor their blood pressure or even some glucose charts to help them track their blood sugar levels. These tools help our participants monitor changes and facilitate discussions with their doctors. Additionally, our team has implemented use of Ohio Department of Aging's Fall Risk Assessment and a Brief Health Literacy Screening Tool to identify further needs for assistance. I understand that you have the challenging task of determining if this program should remain available to Hamilton County seniors in the future, but if you believe these needs can be met by the OBLTSS Front Door Program, I assure you they can't. The Long-Term Services and Supports Questionnaire used by OBLTSS workers does not ask if individuals are connected with a primary care provider, needed specialist, or if they can afford prescription medications. It doesn't prompt them to inquire about fall risks, medical equipment or supplies, or needs for caregiver support. Additionally, OBLTSS workers are not prompted to ask about any insurance needs other than Medicaid. So individuals who don't understand their existing coverage or can't afford it will not be offered assistance. Furthermore, the coaching and education provided by our navigators falls outside of the scope of OBLTSS Front Door workers altogether. Please don't cut this program from the levy. Our team makes an important contribution each day and our community needs the service. Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Thank you so much for your comments. Hold on one second. So on the levy issue. So, okay, so we have, are they on right now, Bridget? We have a 10-minute video. There are five people. So we were going and here, because we did pick it up in virtual, so here what they have to say is.
Joan is like my daughter. Joan and I have had a relationship from the beginning. I can't, I don't know, we just seemed to click right from the beginning. Like I was right for her and she was right for me and we maintained that over a span of 10 years. And I feel comfortable to come to Joan with anything that means any problems, just any, anything that might concern me. You know, my health, my welfare, or what I may need or not need, or if something isn't going right, Joan sees to it that it is righted. Well, I would probably be in a senior citizens living setting. As my mother used to call them, a steel box, a little apartment, you know, and I think that was very appropriate because I have visited friends that live in these units and they're not the greatest thing in the world. It's nothing like your own little place where you can get out of the yard and stretch your legs and sit comfortably in the sun. This has assured me of being able to live in my own home.
As a caregiver, it's, it's really, it means so much to myself as well as to my sister and the rest of the family to just know that there's an additional person that is coming once a week. My sister lives out of state and I'm working full-time and also divided in multiple places. So having just one more day where I know like, okay, someone has come and checked in on my mother in addition to my phone calls, it definitely provides a great relief. If I was to speak with someone who is on the fence about voting on this levy, I would really emphasize that there are many people in our community like my mother who are just hanging on and this service is that extra added touch that enables them to continue to live independently, which is actually, it's kind of like preventative care in medicine. It's something that is a much smaller cost to the, to the overall community to have this service in place to benefit people so that they continue to live independently and thrive versus the alternative, which could be like a nursing home or maybe not surviving at all. So it's, it's, it's a vital service to my mother. And for folks who are like on limited incomes, my mother lives off of social security and my sister and I supplement her, some of her expenses, of course. But this additional added resource means a lot in terms of having someone that, that, that comes over and is involved. A couple hours a week goes a long distance. And not everyone has, you know, someone like myself that's also able to go and be involved. So I imagine many elderly folks in our community, this is just a lifeline, a safety net and vital to their survival.
I would say one of the most important things is at least to me it is, the visit, if you want to call it that, of the person coming in once a week to clean up and take care of a few matters. Not only is that being done, but it's also, how could you call it, contact with the world more. You don't have a feeling of total isolation. Sometimes it's a different person, but anytime they show up at the door, you know, it's something I'm thankful for. And a few things that I don't have to do that particular day. Not that I'm a lazybones, but I manage to do what I do. Not 100% effective and they kind of knock the edges off, knock the edges off the things that I might do.
Through Council on Aging, I receive transportation, I receive home health and I receive things that are necessary for me to stay in my home and my meals on wheels. Just a lot of things. They help, Council on Aging helped me with a lot of things. I mean, even sometime I can call them and they help me with things mentally. So pretty much they, they are a blessing to me. They helped me stay in my home because without them, I probably would be in a nursing home somewhere. Well, Council on Aging provided me, again, an air conditioner. It was light in the nineties, close to 100 degrees and they provided me with the portable air conditioner. They provided me with, like I said, bench, transfer bench so I could get in and out of my tub. And after that got to where I was no longer able to do that, they provided me with a walk-in shower. So it's very easy for me to get in and out of the shower. And if I had, if I didn't have them, I couldn't afford to furnish that. I wouldn't have, I don't know what I would have been.
If my dad would have had to gone into a nursing home prior to COVID or during COVID, that would have been terrifying. And absolutely it crossed my mind every day when I saw all those people in the nursing homes that you couldn't go visit them. Obviously, I didn't go visit my dad either, but I did see him. I saw him from afar because what I would do is I would take the groceries over and put him in the front door and he'd be in the kitchen. So I would just leave him and then after I left and he would come and get him. But if he was in a nursing home rather than getting the ESP services, it would have, it would have been difficult and I don't know that he would have made it. Because the problem is, is what ESP has done for my dad is they've given him, I don't know, it's almost like, the will to live is a lot stronger if you're not totally dependent on somebody and you're just getting a little bit of help. And for somebody as proud as my dad, the help that the ESP gave versus him just going in and let somebody handle everything for him without him making any of the decisions. I don't know, I don't think we'd be talking right now. I don't think he'd be around. The thing is, is I like how with the ESP program, they, they were able to accelerate or not accelerate, but up the frequency whenever it was necessary. In other words, we started with one day a week for Angela to come in like for an hour or so. And then as things progressed, it was no problem for me to call and say, look, I think we might need some more. And so she started coming two times a week and then in the, you know, eventually it was three times a week. So again, you know, it's all, it's all just a big, it all comes together just for, not just the physical health, but for the mental health of not only my dad, but for me and my family as well. Because everything that happens to me affects my entire family. So now you're talking a lot of people impacted. And I'm not even going on a professional level. I mean, it impacts the people I work with. So in essence, the Council on Aging, if you think about it, they, it affects a lot more people than just me and my dad. So I could go on and on. Able to spend the quality time with my dad rather than just taking care of him. I'm sorry. That's huge. I mean, basically, I mean, and like I said, my dad's a really proud guy, so he would feel guilty if I would be coming over. Oh, sit down, talk to me, you know, and yeah, to be able to sit down, talk to him rather than worrying about making sure the laundry is done or, you know, cleaning the bathroom. I could sit down and physically talk with him because you don't know how much longer you're going to have to just visit.
I would tell people about the senior service levy. It needs to be voted on. We need to continue to promote this program because it has helped so many people and will continue to help me.
And we all thank them for their testimonies, their heartfelt testimonies. Those are the end of our comments. This is actually the end of our public hearing. I'll be making a motion in just a minute, but we tried very hard as a board to make sure that we were accessible. We went out to the Board of Election in the evening and then we're here today. We wanted to make sure we got all the input that we could because it's about you and it's about your tax money. And so I will open it up to my fellow commissioners for any comments of Vice President Reese.
Thank you. I just want to thank all of the folks that came out here and many of them came out on Canes and Walkers because this is so important and certainly also those who joined us virtually by Zoom. But the, you know, the testimonies of the help that the levy has done are incredible. And I think it takes a lot of courage, strength, and it has to be important when someone comes up and shares their personal testimony. Because this is their private business. They don't, they don't, they're not obligated to tell us their personal business. But all the stories and the lives that have been saved and, you know, everything from going from homelessness to getting their life back in order to those who lost a loved one to suicide and even had the strength to come up and say, I want to save other lives, even though they're dealing with the loss of their own loved ones. Or those who said, I contemplated suicide myself, but I could stand here today. I mean, these are just very touching, but also very real issues that people face every day. I also think the testimony that talked about, you know, it could hit anyone. It doesn't matter your background. Mental health can affect anyone. The testimony we heard where two of the individuals had corporate America jobs and were just, you know, really doing great in corporate America and got hit with mental health, the overload, the stress and the talk of what COVID, you know, we're, we're now, we're back in masks, but we're still feeling the effects of COVID. What is that going to look like? People who had to stay in and the trauma. So yes, we know that the needs are, are great, but I do want to commend the organizations that are helping people that are on the front lines. We appreciate all that you do. I do want to add one thing to the administrative. I would ask, I had seen something in the news where Children's Hospital indicated they no longer will be accepting CareSource, which my understanding is the only insurance company that's on the exchange, the Affordable Care Act Exchange in Ohio. And I just want to know how that will affect more people now needing Medicaid or where would these people go? And how will this affect our indigent care? I don't know all the details. I'm not in the insurance business, but what I will say, health insurance is really tough when you don't have it. I understand what it means when that exchange, it's not easy. It's a lot easier for us when they have an organization that kind of does all the negotiating with the insurance company for us. And then I've been out where you got to do your own negotiation. It's very tough and I don't know if they're doing good service or not, but they said there were thousands of people that will be affected, thousands of children that would be affected because they no longer will accept CareSource, which is on the exchange. My question is, are these people going to Medicaid? Are these people going to our indigent care levy? Where are these people going? Because if, you know, if they're going from having insurance to not having insurance, then that's more burden, obviously, on these other programs. And I just want to know how it would affect our, our indigent care levy. I know we're flat with the health, hospital levy. I know that children's portion of it is flat. I know that children's portion of it is flat. But I just want to know where are these people gonna go? Where are these babies gonna go? Where are these families going to go? So, childrens may have an answer for that. But if you could get something to us, I really would like to know.
Yeah, Madam President, Madam Vice President, happy to follow up on that and get the board back a report in the next couple of days.
Thank you. That's all the comments that I have for this subject.
Commissioner Dreehaus, thank you.
Thank you. I wanted to thank all the individuals that came in and testified. We do have a difficult decision to make by way of the levies. We've got three levies in front of us. And so, the information that was provided by the individuals that came to testify is so important to us as we try to decide how to move forward. And I think, you know, the dedication of the providers to be here and recruit folks that have benefited from their services is impressive. The passion from the families who have lost loved ones was apparent today. And then the courage of those that receive services and have mental health challenges, for them to stand up and convey to us the importance of the levy dollars to their lives, I think, was very important for us to hear. So, I want to thank them wholeheartedly and look forward to moving forward on this levy within the next couple of weeks. Thank you.
Thank you so much. With no more comments, I'd like to make a motion to close our public hearing on the senior services levy, mental health levy, and indigent care levy.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumis.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehaus.
Yes.
Thank you so much. We do have another public hearing. I wanted to ask, is Eric Beck, are you the only one that's here? Is anyone here for the hearing on the vacation of Spencer Avenue? Someone is here. Okay, I want to proceed forth with that, and then we may take a short break. Okay, come on.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Had a full day already, but this one should be quick. This is just the public hearing for vacation of a portion of the fee right away. It's the other one, please. You should have a drawing if not. It's, this is a paper street in Sycamore Township that runs between Pine Road and Monroe Avenue. The county engineer's office has reviewed it and has no issues with it. Skylar Miller with Sycamore Township is the petitioner. I'm not sure whether he has any comments. We have nothing else to present. If you don't have any other questions.
And what would be the next step on this?
Next step is after you close the hearing, we'll bring you the paperwork and the resolution to do the vacation.
Okay, thank you. Is there someone, are you here, sir, to speak? Thank you for being so patient.
Oh, thank you. Good afternoon. My name's Skylar Miller. I'm the Planning and Zoning Administrator with Sycamore Township. Sycamore Township Board of Trustees made a motion in January to request this vacation of Spencer Avenue. Since that time, we have received no negative comments or concerns from the residents affected by this. This is, right away, that we see no public use for. The residential uses are already encroaching into this area. There's a driveway, there's a fence. It makes more sense for this to be in private hands. That's all I have, unless there's any questions.
Thank you for your comments. Are any questions or comments from my colleagues here now? Okay, I would like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumis.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehaus.
Yes.
Thank you so much. Okay, I'd like to ask that we take, come back at 20 minutes to four, if we, if my colleagues are okay with that? Okay, so five minutes? Little over five minutes, yeah. Thanks. Comments and motions for the commissioners? And I know we've, I just have a few things. I won't belabor the afternoon, but I'm gonna talk all about the music festival. So, I think I'll leave most of that for you. But it was a fantastic weekend, and people just had lots of fun. Lots of people here generated a lot of social and economic interest and need. And so, just real excited. But I'm sure Vice President Reese will speak more about it. But I wanted to mention about JFS. A press release came out, puts a hold on the rental help, waiting for more funding. Basically, over the past year, JFS has paid out more than $35.5 million in emergency rental assistance program funds, preventing more than 11,000 evictions. Most of the approvals went to households led by women. These recipients were affected financially by COVID-19. And this program has helped make sure they don't become homeless. And the reason why I'm speaking about this, we had to kind of go back and forth about how do we handle the fact that we have applied for an additional $40 million to continue this, but we have not received the funds yet. We are pretty confident that we will. But just like Finance 101, you don't want to spend money before you get it. And so, we made the hard decision along with Director Patton at JFS to just kind of hold things a little bit. But we were continuing to work on the people that have already put in applications. We're not going to stop that. So, the progress is not going to stop. And I also wanted to bring up, when you think about the gun range over in Lincoln Heights, we don't call it the Lincoln Heights Gun Range anymore, but you can almost hear crickets. You don't hear anybody talking about it anymore. I haven't heard anybody talking about it. And we're coming to the end of our year. And I'm hoping we can have some sort of resolution, some kind of partnership collaboration for some final decisions on the gun range. I'll continue to do that probably every meeting. But I have heard nothing about it, so I wanted to speak to that. And of course, COVID-19 is high level. And in Hamilton County, we're wearing, that's why we're wearing our masks. I don't think anybody hates it more than me, but we have to do what we have to do. And just for everybody to be careful. And hopefully, our numbers will come down. So, just be safe in the community. And that's all I have. Vice President Reese?
Thank you, Madam President. I do have several things to announce and talk about. First, I wanted to say that it hurts me, but I'm happy for him to move to his next level. Today is the last physical day that we'll see him. Friday is the last day that we'll physically see Edgar Malcolm in my office. And Edgar, I just wanted to tell you that I'm very proud of you. I've seen you grow, develop. You've made a strong contribution and impact to Hamilton County. Many of the people that call our office, hundreds of people, he has to do the logs. He has really helped connect them to services, senior services, and small business services. He said, "Where is the guy?" I know him, Edgar, the guy with the Afro, he can help me. I think Edgar, I think he's 23 now? 20 to turn 24. Turned 24, came to us at 23 years of age. He had one of the youngest here. But he also conducted himself, broke barriers as one of the youngest African-American males to be in this capacity for commissioner and was, I believe, a role model for other young men, young people, Gen Xers, whatever you call your, what are your Z's? I don't know what you call yourselves there. But that next generation worked very, very hard, always professional, always have a smile. I remember on June 1st, we were doing our event for the announcement of the inductees. What a lot of people didn't know was over at Hard Rock Casino. And I was in therapy. And I couldn't get to therapy. And I remember that he and I were both in a car accident. And then his car stopped. And then my sister had to pick me up because we had to get here on time. And he was able to, we drove him to get some extra gas. He got gas. The next thing I know, I caught another ride down here. And here he was coming in on a scooter with a backpack on, coming from an accident. So, I gotta get here on time and had to, was handing out the paperwork to the people on what to say and how to do it. He's just totally committed, been out there with the bus. When I say I went to the 74 out of 79 locations, he was with me, right there to try to help whenever he can and however he can, and doing it, looking professional, being professional, and being committed. So, I just want to say, he's now going back to school. He's leaving us. He's going to Florida, Miami, Florida, to the University of Florida where he'll be studying international and global finance business. So, when he comes back, he'll be able to take care of the old lady when I'm a senior citizen. I guess he'll be making all the money. But I just want to acknowledge and thank Edgar Malcolm for everything you've done.
Madam President?
Yes.
May I just say, it's been a pleasure, Edgar, to work with you. Where are you going? Did you?
University of Miami, in Miami, Florida.
Oh, no kidding?
Yeah.
Oh, great.
MBA in International Global Finance.
Oh, congratulations. That's great. It's been a real pleasure.
So, John, our budget director, you could say you helped him get started with numbers. Jeff and John, he'll understand the budgets.
I can just comment, it's been certainly a pleasure working with you. And as Vice President Reese has said, always professional and just very helpful. And so, we will miss, I will miss you, and I wish you much success.
So, he was shocked I was gonna do that. He thought he was supposed to be taking photos. Madam President, you mentioned the Sistine Music Festival coming back after two years. Madam President, you mentioned the Cincinnati Music Festival coming back after two years. Our board took a bold step, understanding the economic impact of $107 million that the festival was bringing in every year. This year, they exceeded those goals thanks to the bold step of this county board of commissioners. We stepped in, we put, became one of the top sponsors at $690,000. But in return, we got over 80,000 people, 80,000 people. And that doesn't include the other people that just came to town. Every single hotel was booked up all the way from here to Dayton, Ohio. So, you know, we make money off those hotel nights and I can say they were charging a lot of money. We'll talk about that later, just six, six and $700 a night. So I know we brought in a lot, a lot of, a lot of folks, restaurants and small businesses were packed. We just couldn't get enough food. People were just eating and spending and spending and spending. So I'm excited to see what those totals are, but it was a big, big day for us, a big weekend for us, where people came in starting on Wednesday and many weren't leaving until Tuesday. So it was a big deal and I want to thank this board because we stepped up to make sure that the music festival can happen and get back out there after a two-year hiatus. And I certainly believe we're, we certainly are going to get a major return on the investment that we as a county made at, in a very bold way. In addition to that, we had the dedication of our Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame. I couldn't be prouder of Hamilton County and what we presented to the world. We are in Essence Magazine, just came out yesterday, another, they were here, they did a pre-story and then they actually came to Cincinnati. So the first time that we are featured in Essence Magazine in this way. And the way that they have presented us as Hamilton County and the Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame has been incredible. There was so much history being made. We inducted our next inductees, our 2022 inductees, Penny Ford, who flew in from Germany and left her international tour to be with us. We had Midnight Star, the group that broke up 20 years ago and to two different groups who had not talked to, had not talked to each other in 20 years, came together and was hugging and very appreciative of all the original members of Midnight Star, who walked the red carpet together and fellowship together. I think that's a unsung moment, BH, BH1 or one of those, you'll see that. It was incredible. Also Wilbert Longmire, who many of us love and adored, that had played all over with Nancy Wilson and George Benson, was also taken in. And his daughter was there to accept and his grandkids to accept the star. And we also, let me see who did I miss? High Tech, High Tech and many parents that became very popular with their, their kids because they said, oh my God, you were standing next to High Tech, who has produced for Snoop Dogg and even had Snoop Dogg on the tape, sent a tape in saying congratulations to Snoop, to, to High Tech for being in the Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame. Shaka Khan was also on tape of saying congratulations to Penny Ford for going into the Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame. The Whispers were on tape giving congratulations. George Clinton was on tape also saying congratulations. And LA Reid, LA Reid, who went to Hughes High School, who was part of the deal, who has been a music executive mogul, did a surprise visit in order to help present the award to Midnight Star for helping start his career, him and Babyface's career. So it was a star-studded event, red carpet, cameras everywhere, microphones all over the place, four different stages, roller skating, Zap performing live, Pian Everson Price kicking it off with the All-Star Band, everybody loved her. We started inside, we went outside, red carpet at a construction site that we were able to put the backdrop so you didn't even know it was a construction site and people unveiling their stars. And it was just a very complicated event to put together, but it turned out just fabulous. It was completely free and we had 3,000 people that attended this event. Just want to thank some folks. I want to thank, of course, Administrator Jeff Aludo and Holly Christman and Phil Beck and Joe Felkamp, Bridget Dorchtry, Mark Van Holman. Want to thank, of course, my two commissioners, Commissioner Summerall Dumas, President and Commissioner Drehouse. We all voted unanimously for this. They also sent representatives from their office. Chris was there for representing Commissioner Drehouse's office. Bishop Bobby Hilton was there on behalf of Commissioner Dumas's office. Members of the administration that attended, I want to thank both my staff member Quinton Monroe, who I just, they worked themselves, I don't know, I can't believe they still walk in and still with me. Quinn Monroe and Edgar Malcolm. Mimi, I want to thank you for hosting us at the Andrew Brady Music Center and your staff. LAI Communications, Experience Cincinnati, Anastasia, who had national media from all over. We've heard about Essence, there'll be a lot more that will be coming out from a national and international media that were actually here. Want to thank all of the county directors that came out. Leslie, thank you for coming out, our clerks. We got the most dancing clerk ever, the best. I think we got the best dancing clerk of any county in the country. Want to thank Julie Calvert Smith from CBB, Ebony J Media, of course, I said Pian Everson Price and All-Star Band, Chicago White and John Wright helped with security and getting the inductees where they need to be. Jesse Burley, thank you for all the video that you're going to send over to us so we can use it for our Walk of Fame. Dr. Tyra Lindsay Warren from LAI that helped produce the event. Kathleen Delva, Be Shell Jones, Sybil Photography, amazing. We'll see some amazing shots. Karen Jones and like I said, Zap, I think I got everybody. Of course, all of our partners, Proctor and Gamble, Damon Jones, the Kroger Company, Jennifer Moore, beautiful, beautiful flowers and balloons and everything that Krogers did, free water. Keith Daly from Krogers, thank you so much. Hard Rock Casino for hosting us. Greater Cincinnati Foundation, Ellen Katz, thank you. All in Cincinnati, Denisha Porter, First Financial Bank, American Family, Alter Fiber and 3CDC for your Fisher skating mobile rink. And just thank everybody that came out. I mean, we had a bus of 50 people from Youngstown that came just for the Black Music Walk of Fame. And they said they're bringing 50 more next year. So I don't know 100 people. So just thank everyone that came out. It was a beautiful thing and I want to especially thank God for the weather because it was supposed to rain and it didn't. So at this time, I just wanted to show what the Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame is going to look like. And I'll thank all the construction team under Fields Direction. We've gone from rocks and this is how it's going to end up.
Music Walk of Fame. Join me for a tour of our newest tourist attraction. The Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame is an interactive outdoor technology park celebrating and capturing the stories of musical artists, groups, songwriters and producers from Southwest Ohio who have made a major impact to music around the world. Let's take a look. When you come to the entrance of the Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame, you'll see a spectacular gateway to welcome people as they enter. You will be able to use your smartphone devices to connect with our 13 informational kiosks and QR codes to capture and share the amazing stories of our black artists and their music. Can you feel the music? Well, if you can't, we'll help you. We will have pulse drums that will illuminate in a sequence to a beat with the audio. If you keep the beat, you can receive a light show from the adjacent fountain. Everyone loves to take selfies and photos. We have a 3D sculpture that is perfect for taking your pictures and sharing your experience on social media. What is a Walk of Fame without a dance party for the entire family? This area will feature light and sound towers that will have the moving searchlights above it and you will be able to dance the night away. The party won't stop there. Now we step into the future through technology. We have this dance party continuing with augmented reality features in this area that will allow you to see yourself and show people your dance moves. The augmented reality continues by letting you sing and perform virtually with some of your favorite inductees. Come check out our world-class family tourism attraction, featuring our inductees Bootsy Collins, Penny Ford, the Isley Brothers, Midnight Star, Otis Williams, High Tech, Wilbert Longmire, Dr. Charles Foad and more. The Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame will house over 200 stars with new inductees each year. Can you feel the excitement? We'll see you soon.
So I'm very proud we showed that video and people were very excited. Lastly, I was at the Blink announcement on Monday. Blink, we also, this board has supported Blink coming back, another economic development project to bring more tourists from all over the world. And we, we passed $720,000 for that. We're excited to be a part of it and that's happening in October. And they announced that they will have a special activation at the Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame site. It'd be completely free and it'd be the first event, the last event leading up to the grand opening, which will be next year, July 21st, 2023. So that's all that I, that I have. And again, just thank everyone who played a role, all of the designers, all the technology people, all of the construction people that were able to get that red carpet area done in time and have it looking fabulous. So that's all I have, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Drehouse.
Thank you. A couple of things I forgot to mention during the levy hearing, there were some communications I received. I did want to enter them for the record. One is a letter from Paul Kamerek and the other one is a letter from Dr. Jenny O'Donnell, who is a member of the TLRC. Just want to make sure that the clerk has those and I'm happy to pass those along. I think we already received those. So I, I missed a party this past weekend and I'm disappointed that I didn't get to go to the music festival. I've been many times and I know it was a huge success. So I regret not being in town. I was at the NACO conference, the National Association of County Officials, and represented the county there, voted on the new president that was sworn in and talked a lot about the bipartisan infrastructure bill, gun safety, criminal justice reform. There were many, many topics as these, as these conferences go, many, many things to talk about, many ideas shared about things that are happening throughout the country and a little bit of information that I was able to share with others related to what we're doing here in Hamilton County. So it ended up being on a weekend that I may have preferred to be here, but anyway, we all were doing our duties. So appreciate how, how much fun was had. I was following a lot of it on Twitter, looked like a lot of fun. Two other things, one is that I want to remind folks that Election Day is next Tuesday. I think people are not honed in on this necessarily. And so there's still time to vote early at the Board of Elections, but we've got a primary on August 2nd for the State House races and the State Senate races. So I just want to remind people to go to the polls on August 2nd, next Tuesday, and vote in that primary. And then lastly, I was honored to be over at Change Court yesterday. Judge Heather Russell graduated one individual, her name was Denise Sweet. This is the change court that takes women who have been involved in human trafficking and they spend two years in a program and then graduate from the program with a lot of support and the ability to succeed with housing, a job and other supports. So I gave her a proclamation from the county commissioners honoring her and celebrating her achievement. So I was honored to do that on behalf of the commission. That's all I have.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to make a comment on the film that Vice President Reese just presented. Just state of the art, interactive, excited about, I mean, I got excited about those interactive components that will be there and I'm sure that the people that visit will really be excited about it. So that was a great presentation. I also wanted to make a comment as we talk about the music festival and Blink and we talk about those large amounts of money that we allocated. Those monies were allocated at the beginning of our budget. We decided to do large event grants and those were two that put in. So people that are watching, I don't want you to think we took, since we stopped the rental assistance, that we took money out of rental assistance or small business relief or mortgage relief, that this was in a totally different fund. So we did not do that and we would not do that. So county commissioner, oh God, why do I always call you a commissioner?
No problem.
Administrator.
Thank you, Madam President. Just two by leaves today. The first by leave in your packet is budget adjustment number 22. It's for the American Rescue Plan Act grant. So, and this is a congratulations to our Environmental Services Department that received a grant, an ARPO grant to enhance monitoring of air pollutants in or near communities that have increased vulnerability to air pollution. It's an amount of $181,600. The administration recommends approval of the budget adjustment.
Any comments? Hearing none, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the budget adjustment.
Second.
Commissioner Summerall Dumas. Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. Second by leave item in your packet is by leave number two, requires a little bit more explanation. This relates to the reallocation and resertification of delinquent sewer charges to the various individual parcels that comprise the Karu Tower property. So previously, the board took action to certify those charges across the commercial office and hotel parcels in equal thirds. That was the way it had been allocated when there was one owner of the three parcels. Is there, is now a prospective purchaser for the office and commercial space only. It's been requested that the county reallocate those delinquent charges at an amount associated with the actual water usage of those parcels, which is 15% for the office, 15% for commercial and 70% for the hotel. Obviously, the purchaser of the office and the commercial does, as those, as those delinquent charges are satisfied and paid, does not want to be subsidizing the parcel that, that they do not own. So the expectation is this will help facilitate the property closing and ultimately the, the payment of these liens. I will indicate that Mr. Billy Weber from the city manager's office is here, who's done a lot of work on this project. So if there's any specific questions, Mr. Weber will be able to facilitate answers to those. So the administration does recommend approval of the, of the resolution.
Jeff, did you want to speak to the MSD sewer charges and how we will be able to recoup those?
Yeah, well, certainly. So the, the, the charges are on as liens, as a lien certified to the auditor's office. All we're really doing, and ultimately the expectation is that at closing, the, those liens will be satisfied. Ultimately, the, initially, the board passed a resolution certifying those liens to, to the auditor. But again, it was in an amount that was equal across the borders, a third, a third and a third for the different parcels. This just alloc, all we're doing today is allocate, reallocating those, those dollar amounts. It's roughly a million dollars in an amount that is proportionate to the water usage of each of those parcels. So I'm not sure, and Lauren, I think is here as well. So I don't know if there's, if either of you want to speak to this and specifically the issue about the payment of the lien, which I expect is going to happen at, at closing. That's the intent of the parties, Billy. Is that something you can speak to?
Absolutely. Thank you, Commissioners, for your time. So as the administrator explained, the allocation we're going for is 15, 15 and then 70%. That'll leave 30% on what the pending transaction is on, the office and retail. And as Jeff indicated, by reallocating, we will actually facilitate that closing. So the 30% will be repaid at the closing of the sale of the office and retail. That's expected to happen, assuming approval here within the next several weeks. So then the remaining 70% will still be existing as a lien. It will be on the hotel parcel. The hotel parcel is intended to stay under current ownership and still be operated by the current owner. And the city has been working directly with that owner as well because we have both the utility lien and unpaid transit occupancy tax on the hotel parcel. And so we have been working directly with that owner on a plan for repayment. And he is working on securing a $6 million equity financing to then repay both the county and the city on the hotel parcel as well. So that 70, 70% is not being forgiven. It is merely being allocated to that other person.
Thank you for that clarification. I'll open it up for my colleagues. Were you done, Jeff?
I was.
Okay. Vice President Reese?
Thank you. Thank you for the explanation. Thank you for the explanation. I'm going to support this, but I do want to highlight that, you know, we have residents who, if they miss, you know, one or two months, they were getting cut off. And now we have a company that own a Karoo Tower for, have been delinquent for a very long time. The average citizen or the average small business would have been thrown out, shut off, and, you know, had to pay. And I just want to make sure that we have one set of rules. We can't have one set of rules for big business and then a harsher set of rules for small, the little guys, the small businesses, the mom-and-pop stores, the those who are, you know, struggling, trying to survive, even the churches. We cut off a church quicker than we're cutting off a Karoo Tower, and they have been delinquent for, I don't know, months and months and months and months. And even with this, we're gonna, you know, they're gonna get someone to sell it, and they'll buy that portion. Now, I don't want to cut off the water for a hotel, obviously, but there has to be some responsibility. We just can't have two sets of rules. I mean, you know, that's the thing, and I told Jeff about that, that bothers me, is that we've been working and working with people, but when it comes to the average citizen or if it comes to the church or the nonprofit or the small business, we're cutting them off, saying, I'm sorry, there's nothing else we can do. We sent them over here to the rental assistance program. So we need to work on that, Jeff, and put some kind of, some type of policy that has one set of rules. If we're going to work with one group, and I'm not saying don't work with them, then you need to, we need to be working with small businesses. We need to be working with nonprofits. We need to be working with homeowners. That has to be one set of rules. So that's my only comment for the day. And I would like to know when a timeline that the hotel portion of it that's owned by, it's not the hotel, but the owner, when are they going to pay? I need a date, a time, and something, because we have given this person a major lifeline, even before COVID. This is not a COVID situation.
Absolutely. And on your, the first part of your comments, understood and well-taken. On the timeline, I don't have a firm timeline for you on when his equity financing closing will happen, as I stand here today, which will be the repayment of the 70%. But I will, we will be working with his counsel on that, and I will absolutely be able to follow up with Mr. Aludo to provide that timeline.
Well, I'm asking the administrator, it's not his timeline. I want to know what's our timeline, what's MSD's. Give me the same timeline that you got on the people right now. And then that way, he's got to figure out, can he come up with the equity quickly? But we can't just, we got too many deals with the big, not, I'm talking about you personally, but, or anyone personally. We got too many big deals, and it's kind of whenever they get ready, and then the little guy, we're crushing them. We're out there with the truck right now, cutting somebody off, saying we can't do something. We're always saying we can't do nothing to help them. So I would like to put a timeline up that would be saying, this is your timeline. You need to work within it, or you're going to get, you're going to have to be treated like every other business and citizen in Hamilton County. Thank you.
Commissioner Drew House. Thank you. Yeah, no, I've looked over this, and I'm willing to support it. My understanding is that we're trying to break this down so that we can get some of the money from the owner. So I'm going to support this, understand the concern about equal treatment, but I think that this is really the only way forward at this point, so I'm willing to support the resolution.
Thank you. And with the guarantee that the county will receive the money that is owed at closing, I will support this also. I make a motion to adopt by leave two.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dennis.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drew House.
Yes.
Thank you so much. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Other than just to thank Mr. Weber for his patience, I know he came over before the levy hearings. I have no further items today, Commissioners.
Okay. Thank you so much. As a member of the Cincinnati Visitors Bureau on the Executive Board, there is a presentation that's, the meeting started at 4:00, 4:00 to 5:30. I need to leave to, because there's a very important presentation they're getting ready to do. So I'm going to ask Vice President Reese if she could continue the meeting.
Thank you. Thank you. This time, we're going to go to our engineer. Mr. Beck.
Good afternoon again. Just a couple items here today. Item number one is a resolution authorizing a joint agreement between Hamilton County and the Southwest Water District for construction and maintenance of Howard Road improvements. This will allow us to partner with Southwest Water on our Howard Road project. We currently have Ohio Public Works funding for $202,356,000 from Permissive Auto, and Southwest Water will be adding another $41,000. This will allow us to continue to move forward with this project.
Sounds good. Now, on here says $0.
$0 to the county for this portion. This agreement is just with Southwest Water for their portion.
Awesome. Madam Commissioner Drew House, any questions? No questions? I make a motion to pass item number one.
Second.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drew House.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number two is a resolution to transfer parcel. Tax map book 500, page 470, parcel 90, from the Board of Commissioners to Anderson Township. I did give it a picture, because it's a little easier to understand than reading the resolution. This is a port north of, or I guess be west of Sutton Road. Sutton Road is on the lower portion there. This parcel, the part that is highlighted in yellow, was purchased or acquired in 1969 with the intent of relocating Sutton Road. We have no intentions of doing that. That runs through the center of Hillcrest Cemetery, which is a predominantly African-American veteran cemetery in Anderson Township. So we will not be building a road there. So Anderson Township would like us vacate that to them so they can continue with the continued maintenance and upkeep of that cemetery.
Madam Commissioner. No questions. Make a motion to pass item number two.
Second.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drew House.
Yes.
Thank you. Item number three is a resolution authorizing a joint agreement between Amy Poninsky and the Board for the Purchase of Property on Fields, for the Fields Zertle Road Improvements, the Snyder to Wilkins Project, project number 501715. This is for purchase of the entire parcel, and it comes from Permissive Auto funds, and it's $350,000.
Any questions? No questions. I make a motion to pass item number three.
Second.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drew House.
Yes.
Thank you. Item number four is a resolution allowing us to go to bid for the 2022 Sidewalk Repair Replacement Program. This is the second time we've gone out to bid. We, after the high bids, the last time, we adjusted based on current market conditions and have adjusted the engineer's estimate to $59,147,000 and are ready to take it out to bid again, should you approve so.
Okay, one question I do have. I know the last estimate, we had to go out and rebid. Do you think this will start this year or?
Our intent is to try to get it done this year, yes.
Okay. All right. Any questions? No questions? Make a motion to pass item number four.
Second.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drew House.
Yes.
Item number five is just a report to the Commissioners on the vacation request for 10,119 Campbell Avenue in Sims Township. The engineer's office has evaluated the request and has determined that it is unimproved fee right away for a township road and can be disposed of following a public hearing. We've informed the petitioner, and if they decide to move forward and submit the information to us, we'll bring hearing requests to you at a later date.
Okay. Any questions?
No questions.
I move to accept the report.
Second.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drew House.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beck. Item number six, MSD.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Lauren DiGrigio with MSD. We just have one item on the board's agenda today, and that is the Maple Knoll Drive Local Sewer. This request is for approval and appropriation of $844,000 to construct a local sewer on Maple Knoll Drive in Colrain Township to provide public sewer service to 10 residential properties currently served by on-site systems. Four of those 10 systems are currently failing, according to Hamilton County Public Health records. This project is an assessment project, so a portion of the project costs not to exceed $12,000 will ultimately be assessed to each of the benefited properties. As background, this project was initiated by petition and supported by six of the 10 properties. This board held the required hearing, public hearing, on October of 2019. Two owners filed objections to the project based on cost and necessity, which the board later considered and disposed of in December 2019, and then adopted a resolution to proceed with this project in February of 2020. And with that legislation, the board also approved the appropriation of easements for this project. Those appropriation actions have now concluded, and the project is ready to proceed to construction. And just as a reminder, and to anybody listening, when construction is completed, these parcels will be included in MSD's annual final assessment legislation. And if approved, their share of the project costs will be assessed at that time, and they can pay upfront or pay through property taxes generally spread over 20 years. I can take any questions at this time.
No questions? No questions? Move to adopt item number six.
Second.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drew House.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. We now move to our consent agenda. It's item seven through 29. I'll just give some highlights. We got a report, financial statement from the auditor's office that we are asked to receive for the record. We also have a resolution accepting one purchase order for Hamilton County, authorizing its execution and release on behalf of Hamilton County Jobs and Family Services for $156,000. Item number nine is a agreement between Donnie Systems, Inc., and the Board of Hamilton County Commissioners on behalf of the Sheriff's Office regarding full-body scanning equipment at $144,122.14. Item number 10 is a resolution for the execution of an invoice, it's a thin and now invoice regarding licensing fees for Zoom hearings. We definitely need those. 11 is a resolution awarding, authorizing the award of ITB on behalf of the Coroner's Office for firearms and tool marks comparison microscopes at $166,188.20. Then item number 12 is a budget adjustment for emergency management sirens and election grants for the total of $1,680,000, $1,680,681. Item number 13 is authorizing the county administrator into a joint agreement between the Board of County Commissioners and the City of Cheviot regarding a 2022 Community Impact Grant for $25,000. Then we go into Environmental Services, item number 14, and it's a resolution authorizing agreement between Bethany School and the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners on behalf of Hamilton County Department of Environmental Services, Solid Waste Management District for $9,672.1. And then we go to Jobs and Family Services, and we've got a few report of actions that we have to accept. These are actions that the director has made in April 2022 for $132,000, and then another one for $90,000 in terms of their action. Item number 18 is authorizing an award, an execution of agreement between Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners on behalf of the County Department of Jobs and Family Services and the Talbot House. This is our youth employment program for $3,231,066. Item number 19 is a resolution authorizing agreement between the Intrum Healthcare of Cincinnati, Ohio and the Board of Hamilton County Commission on behalf of Jobs and Family Services for nursing services, $20,000. Item number 20 is a resolution authorizing renewal, number one, of the original agreement of Ulster Lynn Services for Youth. They're the provider, and the Board of Hamilton County Commissioners through Jobs and Family Services for Residential Treatment Services, $460,000. Item number 21, resolution authorizing another contract to a provider, Resource Acquisition Corporation, on behalf of Jobs and Family Services, $110,000. Then we go to item number 22, which is another with Jobs and Family Services to the provider, Life Start, Inc., for $55,000 for foster care. Then we go to 23, item number 23, another agreement, contract with Jobs and Family Services and Angels Guarding Youth Services for $95,000. Item number 24, another contract with Jobs and Family Services and the provider, Isaiah Place, for $37,300. I have now number 25, resolution is an agreement between another provider and our Jobs and Family Services, Laurel Oaks Behavioral Health Center for $205,000. Item number 26 is a resolution with another contract with Jobs and Family Services and Hamilton County Juvenile Court for $2,900,000. And then we go to Planning and Development is a resolution for our county administrator to execute deeds to transfer land and property on, over that is in Colrain Township. And then we have our treasure report, which is item number 28, to receive for the record. We have one travel request to approve, requesting travel at the county's expense. The engineer has three employees that's going to the beautiful place of Dublin, Ohio. Those are our, that is our consent agenda. I'll ask Commissioner Drew House, do you have any comments?
I do. I have a comment just on item number nine regarding the sheriff's office. I took a tour of the sheriff's office, I believe it was yesterday, and was just reminded of all the capital needs that are required to keep that facility up to snuff over at the Justice Center. They're working on the elevators, they're working on the windows, they're working on the locks, they're working on painting some of the pods. It's just a constant need for capital improvements over at that facility as it ages. And so I was just reminded of that as I look at this, and I know we will see more of these coming through. I have had a conversation at the state level about, there's a pot of money that was allocated through the capital budget process. It's $50 million for upgrading jails, but as an urban center, we, by way of the formula, we are likely not going to get any of those dollars. And so I did talk to the governor about that and mentioned that, you know, if we're not building a new jail, we don't qualify for some of the dollars that are being made available for more of the rural counties, which I completely support. There is a gap there for counties such as Hamilton County, and he said that he would look into that. He's open to having a conversation about it, and we'll continue to lobby to the state to provide some funding, since they're in the mood to do it. They're in the mood to provide money for jails. I think we need to continue to push to make sure that Hamilton County sees some of those dollars. So I just wanted to bring that to the attention of the board as we look at yet another expenditure for the Justice Center.
Absolutely. Thank you for your work on that. I just wanted to bring up to the administrator, we have several providers, some from a foster care standpoint. I got a phone call, I had a person stop me this weekend. I forgot to say also, I want to thank Ricky Smiley's morning show, did their national show from Cincinnati Fountain Square. And I was on there, and someone stopped me afterwards and was saying that they are a provider for a group home. They're a small business, minority business, female-owned business, and had been four months since they've been paid. I then got a call from a former retired judge, Fanon Rucker, who had had several calls from other small group home providers, minority, African-American owned. And I became very concerned, because four months for any small business, and I've been there, four months will put you out of business. There's no way a small business, no matter who you are, can just float four months' worth of payroll, expenses, et cetera, and not get paid. So I did call, contact Jeff, our administrator, about this issue, and I know our office had sent emails to the Director of Jobs and Family Services, Director Patton, but I wanted our county administrator to give an update, because some may be watching now. What are we doing about this issue?
Yes, thanks, Madam President.
Yes, thanks, Madam Vice President. So upon the forwarding of that information to JFS, I know they put in place an action plan where they're looking at an expedited process for making those payments immediately to vendors and then doing a reconciliation after the fact. So I'll follow up with Director Patton after the meeting and get a progress report on that. But they put that that process into place immediately after getting that information from your office.
Great. And maybe next week, we can report back.
Happy to.
You know, a little more information. I just want to say, because this board, we've done our job. We're passing, just like we're getting ready to pass. We passed the money. We're doing our part. We just got to make sure it doesn't get in a bottleneck from our passing it to them getting actually the check for the work that they've done. So I appreciate that update. And next week, maybe we can have, by that time, we'll probably have more information to share. I would like to make a motion to adopt items number seven through 29.
Second.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
If there is no further business.
An executive session.
Oh, I do got further business. Easy sad, okay. I make a motion to go into executive session pursuant to RC Section 121.22, letter G and three. I hope I said all that right. And I'll ask for, did I say it right? Oh, okay. Let me go back. I make a motion to go into executive session pursuant to RC Section 121.22G3 to conduct a conference with an attorney concerning the subject of pending litigation.
Second.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.